All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember DeBala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Sears.
Here.
Great. Councilmember Siemens is just going to be a bit late tonight, but he will be joining us. Welcome back, everyone. Glad to see everyone after the December break. Tonight is our first meeting for 2019. We have one change to our agenda this evening. Councilwoman Kostic requested that we pull from the consent agenda the resolution providing for appointment to the Commemoration Commission, so that will get pulled from the consent agenda. Looking forward to our meetings that are upcoming on Monday night, Monday, January 14th. We have our Green Team meeting. This is the meeting between the City Council and the Committee on the Environment that will start at 7:00 PM in the Azalea Room. It is open to the public, but we will not be having, taking public comments that evening. So that is Monday night, January 14th, in the Azalea Room if you'd like to attend. Our regular meeting will then be on Wednesday, January 16th. We'll meet here at 7:30 PM. We'll have a presentation from the group of residents who have been working on the last plastic straw in Tacoma Park. They'll come and present on what they've been working on. Our work sessions that evening will be a discussion of the definition of commercial property, a discussion of the draft Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. And that will be it for January 16th. And then on Wednesday, January 23rd, our regular meeting will begin here at 7:30. We'll have a presentation from Crossroads Community Food Network and two work sessions, one on discussion of amendments to Tacoma Park Code purchasing chapters 7.04, 7.08, and 7.12, and a review of council procedures. Two other evenings that we will be meeting in the month of January, one is Thursday, January 24th, and then Tuesday, January 29th. These are our council retreat meetings. We do this every January. It's a time that the City Council reviews our priorities that we've set and begin to talk about the budget. And so, we will begin to do that on January 24th and 29th. Those meetings will be open to the public, but like our meeting with the Green Team, that does not have public comment those nights. And the room and the time will be set soon. Then on the last evening of our, for January of our meetings is January 30th. They'll be here at 7:30. We have a voting session, a resolution adopting the 2018 Emergency Operations Plan, tentatively a resolution adopting definition of commercial property, and tentatively a resolution adopting council procedures. And our work session that night will be our quarterly financial report. So those are our meetings in January. Just to give you some big highlights of what we'll be doing this fall, one thing is, is winter? I'm in fall, right?
It snowed, didn't it?
It did, it did snow. So it's winter, it's January. We will tonight take up cell towers and do the second reading ordinance on that, second reading of the ordinance. Commercial property tax definition, commercial property definition, housing, trees. There is a newsletter article that discusses the process we will be having on that to look at our tree ordinance and the tree canopy. And budget preparations are well underway. The staff have already begun. There's an excellent newsletter article by our deputy city manager this month outlining the process for the budget. And as I said, we'll be having our council retreats. And so, this winter, over the next couple of months, that is what we'll be focusing on. So I think with that, where I want to give, before we do public comments on voting items, since our first voting item is the ordinance on cell towers, and it's been a while since we talked about this, I just wanted to give an update and set the context for where we are on this. And I think we're going to pull up a PowerPoint here.
We might be.
We might be doing that.
Am I supposed to pull it up? I didn't see the presentation on those laptops.
All right. So just to, because it's been a while since we talked about this, before we opened it up for public comments on this voting item, I want to set the stage and remind us all and give us some context, so we can go to the next slide. So as background, we know that the FCC put in place these guidelines back in September, and they go into effect a week from today, actually. Just as more background, Montgomery County zoning codes govern where wireless facilities can be sighted. We are in the city governed by Montgomery zoning. We can, though, establish a permitting process to set safety and aesthetic requirements. And, you know, even though we are under the county zoning rules, we can have an additional layer of protection. And that is really the goal of our ordinance and why we're doing this work. In addition, we did pass a resolution in December before our recess and asked that people go back to that to really look at what our intent is regarding our work on this. As I said, federal law states that the local jurisdiction cannot prohibit deployment of small cell towers. The FCC has established regulations on what jurisdictions can charge based on cost to the jurisdictions. And the FCC has also established a shot clock that limits the time a jurisdiction can take to review a permanent application. Before we get to this, I just want to be perfectly clear that none of us, I think, sitting up here are happy about this. This is preemption. This is actually taking our authority away in the city, and we're not happy about it at all. And we're looking at how we can put in place protections for the city in this ordinance, as well as making sure that we are not doing something that violates the rules and regulations so that it would invalidate any of the work that we're doing. Just to make that clear. So the purpose of the city resolution ordinance is really to make sure that in our public right-of-way, that we are protecting and preserving aesthetics in the community, as well as value, the property values, and looking also at health, safety, and environmental impacts of these, and protecting our community. We've been over this before. The purpose of our ordinance is to minimize risk to public health and safety, minimize the overuse and installation of poles or equipment cabinets in the public right-of-way, maintain the integrity and character of our community, ensure that the installations are subject to periodic review, ensure that the city bears no risk or liability as a result of the installations, provide access to wireless technology in the community, and ensure public and city government notification. So what have we been doing this fall and this early winter? First, we, as I noted, we passed the resolution on December 5th. That is on the city website if you'd like to look at it. We are, had passed the first reading of this ordinance back in December, and tonight we are working on the second vote on this ordinance. We have joined a coalition of other jurisdictions and organizations from across the country to challenge the FCC order. We are monitoring developments regarding the franchise fees through the National League of Cities and the Maryland Municipal League, and we may possibly join that lawsuit in the future. We have sent a letter to the incoming county executive and county council. Well, now that they're incoming, they are. They are, now. And the planning board concerning, are raising concerns and requests they revisit ZTA 18-02, which they passed last spring, that allows for the placement of cell tower antenna close by multifamily buildings. In addition, we request that each of these entities work collaboratively with the city in the future on these issues, and that we also requested that they appoint someone from Tacoma Park to the Tower Commission. We have not heard back from the county executive's office, county council, or the planning board, and sent another note on Friday requesting that they get back to us as soon as possible with their plans on this. We can skip this one, we'll get to it. So, changes, just to let you know, changes since the first reading. When we did the first reading on this, we noted a number of things that we wanted to change before we took it up again. These were all things that we had agreed to as a council and are reflected in this ordinance. To make public notice and comment and community meeting requirements for new pole and new antenna applications equivalent, we added a prohibition on replacement poles exceeding the girth of existing poles, consolidated redundant application review standards, eliminated bias in favor of the co-location of antennas, added requirements that telecommunications facilities and structures be marked with an identification number and the contact information for the responsible party to facilitate the reporting of problems, and added provision requiring initial testing to ensure that the cumulative radio frequency emissions from co-located antennas do not exceed federal limits. So, next steps. We're now receiving regular updates from the law firm representing the coalition of jurisdictions challenging the FCC ruling. Unfortunately, we don't have any good news to share at this time. In early January, last Friday, we, a number of us, myself, councilmember Kovar, and councilmember Smith, met with representatives of Community Vision for Tacoma to discuss and receive feedback on the updated ordinance. I just want to thank those groups of residents who've been working on this and who met with us. We will discuss when we come to this item, a number of other changes that we're proposing this evening based on those discussions. We recently received an application for a small cell antenna in the city's right-of-way at 902 Merrimack. The staff is reviewing the application, and we did make a call today to the Tower Committee to ask them to table that application, because they were having their meeting today, and that application has been tabled. So, next steps. As we said, we loop back with the county council and the county executive's office to, regarding our letter and the request to participate on the Tower Commission. We are engaging an engineering consultant to help us with the writing of the regulations, because that will be the next step after we pass the ordinance, is then we need to actually write the application and the regulations to accompany it. We will be developing the administrative regulations and developing the application process. And I'm going to turn it over to the city manager, because I know we had a number of questions about what that process would look like.
Thank you. I don't hear your voice.
Let's see if I can turn you on. Now.
Is that better? Thank you. So the way we prepare regulations is we draft the regulations. We'll work with some experts on, in segments of that, and certainly with legal counsel to draft regulations. As we, it can be done as a whole slew of, big package of regulations, or it could be done in sections, depending on, you know, there may be some parts of this that we can expedite and other parts that need additional expertise before they're developed. But once they are drafted, we post them on the website, we advertise them in a newsletter article so that we can get public comment on them. There is an option for the council to have a discussion and a public hearing on those regulations. Once we consider any changes to the regulations, we post them again on the website. A notice about that appears again in the newsletter with the effective date of those regulations. So, you know, I think we've heard an awful lot in the past few weeks. We have lots of notes. We also know how we need to work in terms of our internal processes, and so we'll be developing those. Where there's things that we have questions about, we'll reach out, but there'll be plenty of opportunities, I think, for public comment in the two different times that it comes through the newsletter and being posted on the website.
Okay. Thank you for that update. Do we have anything else? Is there, is that it? All right, that's it. So, because it's been a while since we took this up over our December recess, I just wanted to set that context before opening it up for public comments. So, now we will have public comments on voting items. If everyone would like to speak to the second reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 11.12, Permits and Improvements to Regulate the Installation of Telecommunications Equipment in the City Right-of-Ways, now's the time to do that.
I'm Michelle Bailey, Sherman Avenue. You've heard from me a lot on this issue, but tonight I want to focus on transparency and the process from start to finish, in addition to your efforts for transparency that we, we hope you're, you know, going to be taking. Citizens are organizing and creating a website with the following key objectives: to make sure that every citizen of Tacoma Park knows exactly what's happening with each and every cell tower at every stage, from application to approval to the installation and post-installation inspection; to help facilitate the documentation of current health conditions. All citizens are encouraged to document their family's health, including pets, et cetera; to help facilitate the documentation of existing environmental conditions, trees, plants, RF readings of individual dwellings, RF readings in the ambient, public spaces, schools, et cetera; to provide RF meter lending information, instructions, and forms for writing down the numbers; to help ensure that every installation is following the ordinance and complying with the FCC emission standards, such as they are; to provide information about what our public officials' efforts are here in Tacoma Park and in Montgomery County around safety testing in lieu of the FCC standards, which are useless. We are asking them to make their own independent analysis and report it. Going forth in the absence of evidence is negligent. Citizens will be watching this effort closely, and we will be documenting it on this website. Safety guidelines for home RF testing and remediation should be provided by the city. A process for filing a complaint and remediation should be included. To provide information about how to reduce wireless radiation in the home. To provide information on the FCC, which is described in a recent academic paper as a captured agency, one that is supposed to regulate the industry that dominates and controls it. Also, information about the real reasons behind the telecom's lamb grab. They want to take over public rights of waste, which will be extremely lucrative for them and their enablers. One reason is because once they get access to a site and make an installation in the future, and likely with very little oversight, if any, they will be able to come back and put up more boxes, more electronics, more equipment, more wires. To coordinate our efforts on the county, state, and federal level, and to stay abreast of the latest developments. Thank you, Mayor, for voicing your support for the idea of this website a few days ago, and to all of you for your efforts here. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening?
Thank you so much, Mayor Stewart, and all of the council and city staff, Ms. Ludlow and Mr. Dan Weber, for the very hard work that I know you've done in trying to craft as protective a law as possible. And I am, by the way, speaking on behalf of Community Vision for Tacoma with my initial comments here. We know you've been struggling against very tight restrictions that the FCC and federal law have imposed on local governments. And certainly, the worst is probably that you are not supposed to take into account our concerns, our health concerns about radio frequency radiation emissions, or, in terms of when you write and enforce the ordinance, unless such emissions exceed the FCC's very weak and very outdated exposure limits. These 1996 FCC standards are based also on very stale science, and they ignore the growing body of peer-reviewed research indicating biological harm to people, wildlife, and trees at much lower levels than the FCC allows. We ask that you work, as I know you're intending, we really support your working closely at the county level to try to strengthen the county protections for residents, and we hope, we urge you to look at the sensitive use issue, and do whatever you can to, to use that as a tool to protect public interest. The other thing is that in the regulations, we hope that the council will, that you would add language where the council will be consulted, and if it's possible legally to have an approval council process, we would urge that. My last comments are, I want to just kind of personally address the industry, Crown Castle, which I know has been here before, and the other tower companies, and the wireless carriers that they represent, like AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Sprint. We know Verizon's taken an interest in our, in our ordinance. We also know that Pepco is willing to abide by this local preemption situation and profit on local governments being bullied around. So, what we, what I would like to just say is that, you know, the industry has first gagged us, they've blindfolded us in terms of trying to suppress, delay, prevent research, and now they finally tighten the handcuffs to the point of bleeding. They've gone too far. They are sparking a national movement to get them back under control, and we will do, families across the US will do, and local governments, I hope, will work with us, do everything possible to help them get into a bully recovery program as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anna Olson, Sherman Avenue. So first of all, I want to thank everyone who's commented and helped bring light on this issue tonight and at previous sessions, and that includes you, city council, and Mayor Stewart. However, I want to zoom out for a second and address a bigger picture issue. The state of democracy in the United States is such that local governments more than ever need to act as gatekeepers of this democracy, protecting the interests of the citizens and the safety of the citizens. And this is particularly true when federal agencies, such as the Federal Communications Commission, are completely captured by industry interests, like Michelle mentioned before, and also Colleen. And when you look at the gag order, which I think all of you are familiar with by now, the mere fact that the FCC is preventing local governments from protecting its citizens by citing health issues should tell us that that is the main concern we need to pay attention And so I urge you to continue to work with other levels of local and state government, Montgomery County Council, the county executive, and the Maryland State Legislature, as well as local government around the country, to fight the Federal Communications Commission on this, to join the lawsuits, to follow through, and to restore democracy, because this, quite frankly, is not democracy. Thank you.
Any other public comments on this item?
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Nathan Campbell. I'm a government relations project manager for Crown Castle, responsible for overseeing our small cell deployments in the state of Maryland. Our local office is at 10980 Grandchester Way in Columbia, Maryland. Our customers represent the major wireless carriers whose names would be familiar to you and the residents of Tacoma Park, who rely on them and the networks that we help provide for cellular phone service and wireless data. Crown Castle has a strong track record of working with counties and municipalities in the state of Maryland, including the city of Westminster, Carroll County, Ocean City, Howard County, the city of Baltimore, and Montgomery County. To date, we've deployed more than 750 physical small cell facilities across the state, and we expect that number to continue to grow in the years to come. We know that small cell technology and 5G brings the promise of job creation, economic investment, and development, but small cell technology is about today as much as tomorrow. Small cell installations provide the infrastructure needed for municipalities to improve public safety communications, monitor their transportation systems, and enhance smart energy initiatives. Most notably, 80% of 911 calls are placed from a wireless device, making a reliable service critical to public health and welfare. Adopting these regulations as written today would limit smart cell deployment in Tacoma Park and put the city at a disadvantage relative to surrounding municipalities, ultimately hurting the long-term growth of the city and the residents of Tacoma Park. The regulations before you today will not allow for the deployment of small cell technology in an efficient man, in an efficient manner. Leaving determination of appropriate equipment volumes and appearance to the sole discretion of the director makes it unnecessarily complex to design an installation that meets the technical needs of the carriers while minimizing impacts to the right-of-way in the community. Specifying equipment attachment heights and orientations and pole diameters that run contrary to the standards established by the utility pole owners risk making existing utility poles unusable, necessitating the installation of new infrastructure in the right-of-way that your ordinance is designed to prevent. Crown Castle has developed equipment solutions that allow multiple carriers to be placed on the same structure, meaning fewer structures are needed to serve the same area. As behavioral trends accelerate and more individuals treat their smartphones like computers, it will become increasingly clear that 5G and the infrastructure needed to support it is a necessity, not a luxury. With that in mind, we hope the city of Tacoma Park will take some additional time to continue working through these issues with us. Thank you again for your time this evening.
Thank you. And Mr. Campbell, did you submit those remarks to us?
I have not, but I can.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Karen Elrich, Ward 5. Hi, Karen Elrich, Ward 5. I want to thank you all for the work you guys have been doing, and appreciate that you took time out last Friday so that we could all talk. I just wanted to remind you that we don't want to be guinea pigs. And, you know, and I know that we can't talk, you guys can't talk about health, but we will be talking about health. And we'll be having programs, and we is the, yeah, sorry about that. We will be holding meetings and education. This is going on across our country, and we need to make sure that Tacoma Park keeps their place in the forefront of things. And let people know, we're not going to be guinea pigs. We're not going to have our children be guinea pigs, and we're not going to be guinea pigs ourselves. And I look forward to working with you all to make sure that that is said very clearly, and you can say it in the words that you have to say it, and we will say it in the words that we will say. Thank you.
Evening. Excuse me, I've got a cough, so I'll try to be quick. I'm Michael Feldman-Winsec. I live on Sherman Avenue. First, I want to thank you for saying you're going to fight on our behalf. I really appreciate that, hearing that from a politician, and I hope we can all band together through the process. I wanted to echo what our fellow residents have said. We're prepared to fight against this corporation coming in, and I feel bad for Mr. Campbell for having to come into this particular auditorium and present what he had to present. And I don't think we necessarily disagree with the benefits of 5G, but I'm not prepared to accept the risk before we know more, and we're assured monitoring and transparency throughout the process. And if Tesla were to come in and force you to use a self-driving car after accidents or unproven reliability, that would be an outrage. And I'm not willing to consent at this point to this coming in. So, thank you.
Great. Any other public comments on this voting item?
Hello, Cynthia Mariel. I would like to request that Mr. Campbell submit comments, additional comments on the health impact of 5G cell towers, and I would like him to submit photographs of his own home, and that of his children and grandchildren's home, if they do indeed exist, where he's feeling comfortable having those children live next to a 5G cell tower. Is he living with a 5G cell tower next to his home? But his comments are not complete without making a statement on the health impact.
Thank you. Anyone else?
First, I want to thank you, join everyone who's already said this, in thanking you for all your hard work.
Can you say your name? Sorry, for the record, your name.
Oh, Catherine Katzen, Ward 2.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to ask you to continue to work with the county to strengthen the fight against the FCC, and to do everything that you can to protect us from this health risk. The other person, last person was, last people were so eloquent in saying that we agree with the benefits of it, but we don't want to accept the risks. To me, it reminds me of other things that seemed really effective, like DDT and killing pests, until we realized that it was killing the birds and the animals and giving the people cancer. And asbestos is a really effective building material until we realized how harmful it is. I don't want to be a part of this risk. I don't see any evidence that a 5G network is a luxury if the people that want to use it are suffering from brain cancer. As a mother and a teacher who's seen students and their family members suffering from these illnesses, I don't want to take the risk. After knowing that the science is clear, the connection of this radio frequency to our health, I don't want to be a part of this experiment either. I don't want my children to be a part of it. I don't want anyone's children. Thank you.
Any other public comments on this voting item? Seeing none, we'll go to our next item. That will be the appointment to the Commemoration Commission, since we pulled that from the consent agenda. Any comments on that? Seeing none, then we have our consent agenda that has ordinance approving contracts for officiating for recreation sports programs, and appointment to the Tree Commission. Any public comments on our consent agenda? Okay? Seeing none, then we will now move to our voting session. Our first item tonight is the second reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 11.12, Permits and Improvements to Regulate the Installation of Telecommunications Equipment in the City Right-of-Way. We have been joined on the dais by our city attorney. Thank you for coming. Tonight, what I thought we would go through, the...
Just have public comments and other topics.
Those go after our voting session, Ms. Machuie. Thank you. The cover sheet for this evening talks about the changes that we made, and I went over that in the presentation earlier, since we voted on this in December. So, I'm going to ask my colleagues to turn to the document that is the red line version showing changes since January 3rd. It is the 1 dated January 8th that we received from the city attorney last night.
I think it's the last one.
The last one in your packet. This has been updated on the city website, and do we have any copies here? And there are extra copies if people don't have them with them over here if you'd like to follow along. Yes?
I was just unclear, since 18 or 13?
Since 1, so it's dated 18. It says at the top, 18, 2019, red line showing changes since January 3rd, 2019. Do you have that one? Does everyone have it? Okay. All right. So, there are a number of other changes that have been made, as I said, since we met with representatives of some residents. And how I'd like to do this is first ask for someone to move the ordinance, and then we'll second it, and then we'll walk through, and then any changes that move with the changes that we have here. And then if there are additional changes, there will be amendments. All right? So, is that clear to everyone? All right. Would someone like to move the ordinance?
Someone.
Do I have a second? Second. So, Councilmember Smith moved, Councilwoman Dibala second, and now we will walk through the ordinance. So, remember, if we want changes made, it will be an amendment to the document in front of us.
I'm sorry, just so the movement was for the red line showing?
Yes. Yes. So, what is up on the website as the clean version? All right. Or is that the clean version on the, okay, sorry. Then, sorry, take that back, confusing. Yeah. Okay. All right. So, I'm just going to walk through the lines and see if we have any additional changes.
Can I just ask?
Yeah.
I can't really answer my microphone.
All right. Now, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, is the clean copy the same as the red line, just without the things crossed out?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So, if you have read that one, then you're good to go. Okay. So, starting at the first page, the first, going from line 1 down to 46, includes whereas clauses and a therefore clause. Changes have been made to, that we just adopted, that reflect some of the feedback we received from the residents. And it also is more reflective now of what was in our resolution in December. Would anyone like to propose changes to the ordinance from lines 1 through 46? Councilmember Kovar. I have to, sorry. No, sorry, I have to do it manually.
That work now?
Yeah, you're good.
Thank you. I just wanted to suggest to my colleagues that we look at the effective date question, and so that appears at the bottom of this page, and if I'm using the correct document, that'll be lines 43 through 46. And that provision at the moment calls for the changes to be effective within 90 days. And I certainly understand the intent behind that, which is so that we have time to prepare the regulations and so on. The concern that I have, though, is that with the FCC ruling that this ordinance is in response to going into effect in just a few days, on the 14th of this month, I don't want us to be in a situation where we have a three-month period of uncertainty where, I mean, I think my understanding of the situation would be that this would not apply until the effective date. So, I would much prefer to have us, have it be effective now upon passage, and as an indication that we're going to be dutifully working on the regulations, one of the suggestions that the city manager had made, actually, was that we could have another whereas clause, which would express our commitment, or hope, or anticipation of completing the regulations as expeditiously as possible, but ideally within 90 days. So, it is a shift, but it would mean that this would go into effect in advance of the effective date of the FCC ruling. And if we need the precise language...
Do we need to have it as another whereas clause, or could we just amend the therefore clause to say, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, that effective immediately, that the ordinance is effective immediately with regulations complete within 90 days from date of adoption?
Well, I wouldn't want the immediacy to be contingent upon the regulations in case they take 91 days. That's the only thing. So, with the expectation, or the plan, or the commitment, or the anticipation that we were completed by then, something like that. I don't know. Maybe Ken can...
Is that?
You're good.
Okay. In the whereas clause, we just, not whereas, but in the therefore clause, we say it's effective immediately, and then in the, we can make a change to the section authorizing regulations to say that they shall be done within 90 days.
Okay. Do you have a line item for where it is in the?
Yes.
Oh, that's near the back, right?
On page, on the last page, line 476 says the Director may promulgate regulations, I would say, change made to shall promulgate regulations to implement this chapter within 90 days.
Mayor, I mean, I would like to pick up on Councilmember Kovar's statement that it not just be within 90 days. I mean, I think, I think the Director shall promulgate regulations to implement this chapter, you know, with the intention or with the goal to have them done within 90 days. But, you know, just recognizing, as you said, it might be 91. We do have to notify, put it in the newsletter twice, so I just, I don't know if that's a, if there is a wording that works for that, that's within the code, or...
Shall endeavor to...
Shall endeavor to, that would be fine.
So, shall endeavor to promulgate regulations to implement this chapter within, within 90 days. All right. So, the changes we have on the table are that, to the thereas clause, that it would be effective immediately from date of adoption, and in line 476, it says the Director shall endeavor to promulgate regulations to implement this chapter within 90 days. Councilmember Kovar, would you like to move that amendment?
I would. Thank you, and thank you for the additional suggestions. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Do I have a second to the amendment? Councilwoman Dibala, second. Any conversation or discussion? Councilwoman, CRC.
So, I just want to make sure I understand. So, if we receive an application tomorrow, and let's say we vote in favor, right, and this is immediate, we receive an application tomorrow, does that mean that application waits until our regulations are finalized? Like, how does that work?
Sorry, I got to do that. Nope, you got to say it again. You are not.
That would be the plan, to wait until the regulations are promulgated.
And we wouldn't in any way be in, like, kind of violation of anything in terms of, like, trying to stall? I was just trying to make sure that we're not, you know, that, because you could say six months from now, two years from now. So, I just want to make sure that we wouldn't be in any trouble of a perception of trying to delay meeting the FCC requirements.
You know, if challenged on that issue, we will, we will deal with it. I can't guarantee you that we wouldn't be in violation.
Can I ask a follow-up question? So, if we had it, if we had the ordinance effective within 90 days, then what happens between now and 90 days? Is there nothing?
I mean, the terms of the ordinance are in place.
If it stays the way it is written now before amendment, effective 90 days from now. So, in that case, if the ordinance is not effective for 90 days, same question.
Same thing happens.
What happens in the middle there?
Oh, it...
Again, asking for, go ahead, sorry.
I mean, I think we'd have to make that decision if we, if we, if we don't postpone, or if we do postpone the effective date.
Sorry, I want to make sure I understand that, because I just, choo, over my head. So, basically, even if we were to say effective 90 days from the date of adoption, if we receive an application, which we have, prior to finalizing our ordinance, that it would in essence have to wait, right? Because we wouldn't have, like, how could we approve it if we don't have the processes in place yet? And I thought that there was provisions to allow for us to put the necessary protocols in place. So, I guess that's the part I'm trying to figure out.
Councilmember Kovar, did you want to speak to that?
Well, I think my understanding of it is, if we have it the way it is at the moment in the draft, with this amendment not having been approved yet, the law goes into effect in 90 days. We do not have any of the things that we're talking about in this ordinance for the next 90 days. So, all we have is what we currently have, which is, I think most people in the community consider to be, you know, very little. And that would, there would be absolutely nothing we could do over the next 90 days to insist on anything that's in here. If we make it effective immediately, I appreciate that there's an element of uncertainty in that we don't have some of the regulations in effect. However, some of the requirements are just requirements, and they would have to be met. And it does mean proceeding with a slight, with some level of uncertainty, but I put that against knowing categorically that we have no protection for 90 days, and I come down on the side of the other. So, it's not a slam dunk in that way, but that's the trade-off, I think.
Yeah, I agree with you. I'm just trying to figure out logistically, because there's one on the table right now.
Yeah.
Unbalanced, you know, having heard the concerns about the 90-day delay, I think it makes sense to make it effective immediately.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions on this? Any other questions on this? All right, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. So, now we will go, starting on line fifty-two to eighty-eight, our definitions. Any concerns or changes on the definitions? All right, next then, we'll start at line eighty-nine, and this is the section eleven point twelve point zero one zero, permit requiring, required for grading, construction, installation. And this section goes from line eighty-nine to one-thirty-six. Any changes in this section or questions? Okay, seeing none. Then we will start at line one-thirty-seven, which is the chapter that is on communications facilities and communication support structures requirement and findings. And that section goes till line two-oh-two. So, from line one-thirty-seven to two-oh-two, do we have any changes or questions? Councilmember Kovar, did you have a?
One of the questions that has come up with respect to the RF testing, and I say this with the understanding that the, as a number of the residents pointed out, and I appreciate that, that the, the standards are very out of date. It's what we have at the moment that we have to work on, work with. The question was, that's come up is, in addition to the testing requirement, would we have a baseline test of the relevant area prior to the testing of the installation? And that may be something that could be addressed through regulations rather than through changing the ordinance. Would you like to opine on that?
That was my understanding about our intention of the process, that the, that before one would be installed, we would have a baseline, then we would have the item tested to see where that stay, where that stood. If there was another one added, again, we would have it tested. Then there's annual testing that's part of this normal process, so that we can ensure that the overall reading at that location does not exceed the federal standards. So, we will be explicit about that in the regulations.
And that would be with independent testers as well?
All right, so then, oh, sorry. Okay, you're on.
When we're collecting that data, I think it would be useful if we could make sure that we form some sort of database as we're getting that in, so it all goes into one place we can find it and can refer back to. Thank you.
All right. Then the next section is on permits, on permit application. I'm sorry.
Eleven twelve oh one five.
Okay.
Thank you. I would just like, since there have been several changes to the different provisions relating to the tree ordinance, I would like to have, Ken, specifically in terms of the modified exemption from the tree ordinance, just explain what, what is expected of, of an applicant. We get a lot of applications from people, we, if we get a lot of applications from companies from out of town, they may not be familiar with it, so let's just walk through it. Thank you.
Okay, so, they're going to have to document the urban forest trees located in the vicinity of the installation. And then the, the, the city, the urban forest manager will review the application and determine the impact on the trees. And if, you know, there's going to be adverse impact on the trees, then you look at whether there's a different pole nearby where there would be less impact on the trees. And, you know, and it's going to be weighed against whether, you know, the precise location is required to provide cell coverage. And if that location is required, then the work is going to be, have to be done in a way that minimizes adverse impact on the trees. Trees that have to be removed will have to be replaced in accordance with the replacement requirements of the tree ordinance. The, really, the, I mean, the substance of the tree ordinance applies. The, what does not apply is the procedural components of the tree ordinance, which would be, you know, public posting when there's been a tree permit application and an opportunity to appeal to the tree commission for a denial, simply because the logistics of posting, noting, scheduling a hearing, issuing a decision would prevent us most likely, in most cases, from complying with the time limits to rule on an application.
All right, are we ready to move on? All right, then, section on permit applications that begin at line two-oh-three and end at line two-fifty-four. Any additional changes or comments here? Councilwoman DeBala, is your light on? Okay. Sorry, the lights are messed up tonight, so. And it's the first night back, so I'm a little rusty.
I do have a question.
Line two-twenty-four is an add. Do, Ken, do you want to say anything about that section B, about a potential waiver of requirements, not just for communications facilities, but for all permit applications?
The, the, the purpose of that paragraph is to, to allow, for example, you know, we require a diagram of all the trees in the area, but if there's no excavation or heavy equipment, then, then that information wouldn't be, you know, important to the, to the decision. So, it's just reducing the burden on an applicant when it makes sense.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or changes on this section? All right, then we're at line two-fifty-five, application requirements, and that goes to, it's a short one, two-fifty-seven. The next was, section was two-fifty-eight, application revision and resubmission to line two-sixty-three. Then line two-sixty-four, examination of application, issuance of permit, to line two-seventy-five. Councilwoman DeBala. No, I need to do it, sorry. I'm not there yet, I had to use the mouse, sorry.
I would use my psycho voice, except I don't have it today. So, I just want to note, earlier we were talking about the administrative regulations and when and how they apply and when they kick in. I just want to note that this does very specifically link to the administrative regulations, which I think is a good thing.
Then we're at line two-seventy-six, approval of plans required, to two-eighty-two. Lines two-eighty-three, permit fees, to two-ninety-five. My, Councilwoman DeBala.
I wanted to ask about the, the, in the addition, the possible addition of administration in this list of things, which in a lot of other places, the city attorney added the phrase "and administrative costs," and it's not here. And I'm just, there's probably a reason for it. Just like to know what it is.
I, I mean, I, I don't know the difference between processing and administration. We, there's no harm, there's no harm in adding it. I, I believe we cover all the, the fees we might incur in connection with reviewing a permit the way it's written.
Okay, I just, I just wondered, since you used the, the term in other places, whether it would make sense to stick it in here as well.
Which line are you looking at?
I am looking at line two-eighty-six. And, and the intent is to cover all the, all the costs of permitting. Yeah, I was.
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay, so, I'm going to make a formal motion to add after processing the word administration and then review inspection, et cetera. And the reason is because that legal term is used in other parts of the application with reference to fees, than here where the, where it's the, where the rubber meets the road. I'd like to see it in here.
Okay. Do I have a second for the amendment?
Second.
Councilwoman Caustic, second. Any discussion on this? All those in favor of the addition of administration in line two-eighty-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on then, we're on line two-ninety-six, permit fees not to be credited or returned, to two-ninety-nine. Line three-hundred, expiration of permits, renewal, to line three-oh-three. That takes us to line three-oh-five, exceeding permit time periods prohibited, to line three-oh-nine. We're at line three-ten, conditions for approval of, for all communications facilities and support structures, to line, ooh, this is a long one, to line, yeah, I'm not, I'm not going anywhere, I'm just going, so look at line three-ten to three-ninety-seven. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. This is a small thing, but if you go to line, three, lines three-nineteen through three-twenty-two, the first part of B, and it says, "The perma, the perma-te shall submit and maintain current at all times basic contact and site information on a form to be supplied by the city." And then, this is the point I wanted to raise, "The perma-te shall notify the city of any changes to the information submitted within seven days of any change, including change of the name or legal status." So, this is if there should be a sale or some other change in the, in the leadership of the organization. I would like us to say that the updated information with the contact information and so on, when that happens, within the same period of time, also needs to be reflected on the, the poll, because we have a requirement that there be a twenty-four-hour number for people to call if there's some sort of concern or problem with, with, with the equipment. And I think if a change occurs like this, we don't want the old information sitting up there for a long time.
It does say for the next, the next thing. Do.
Right, but that's still on the form maintained by the city, if I read it correctly. That, that is the information, but, that we're talking about, but.
I'm sorry, Peter, do you remember where the?
Yeah, there's a separate spot where the.
Requirement.
The requirement for the twenty-four-hour inf, emergency phone number occurs, and you could put it, you could put it there as well, I suppose.
I will say that from a, from a real-life situation, a company is not going to have time within seven days to go out and change all the poles. So, there, there may be a larger period of time.
As expeditiously as possible would be fine, but, yeah, I, I agree, if it turns out, which we don't want to be the case, that there are lots and lots of polls, it doesn't have to be seven days, but I just don't, I just want there to be a requirement that that be addressed. We could just add language here, saying that emergency contact information on poles, in the event of a change in ownership, emergency contact information on poles should be updated as expeditiously as possible. We could just have it be eleven point twelve point one-eighty-five B and add a new section three, that would just, after the legal status of the owner, certification is applicable, just say, "The emergency contact information on the installations shall be updated to reflect the, the new ownership as expeditiously as possible," or in an expeditious manner.
You know, for that, I, I think it's, I, I think that that language may just be better, actually, in the paragraph of B, just before this information shall include, or somewhere in there, because, because that's where it's ref, that's where it talks about it being submitted if there's a change. So, it just makes sense to have that associated with that sentence.
Okay.
So, do we have language? Sorry.
Emergency information listed on poles shall be updated as expeditiously as possible.
In the event of such a change, or something like that.
In the event of such a change.
Okay.
All right.
And that would go just before that, this information shall include.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, do I have a second for that amendment? Councilwoman Caustic, second. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I do have a follow-up on that, though. Where is the section on the posting requirement? Because I, I'm having a hard time finding it.
It is there, but.
I just want to make sure that it is there.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. Is it on, look at line four-oh-three, that's the application, dah 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 dah. No, that's the posting of the application.
I think it's earlier.
It's earlier.
I think.
It's certainly the regulation.
Okay.
I think, what, one-eighty-five?
One, one-sixty-four through one-eighty-eight. It's, I think, number eight.
Line one-eighty-six, exactly. That's it, yep.
Yep, there it is.
Page six, line one-eighty-six, yep.
Top three-six.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
All right. So, anything? All right, take your time.
I think I might have one other thing, but I'm, I'm using the wrong. Yeah, in, in lines three-thirty-one through three-thirty-six, are we still in that?
Yep.
Paragraph D. So, it, it says, "The perma-te shall ensure that the facility complies with the most current industry standards for size, et cetera." And earlier, we talked about this in advance, earlier, there's a provision on lines.
Three-fifteen.
Three-fifteen through three-eighteen, where it, it makes it clear that we're not just looking for the latest updates of great technology, we're looking for technology that reduces noise, RF emissions, energy usage, et cetera. So, I think we want to just pick up that same language there.
Do people see that, that on line three-fifteen to three-eighteen, that change was made to specify and not just say generally updates in technology standards? And that needs to be carried over into the section with lines thirty-one through, three, uh, three-thirty-one to three-thirty-six. Does the city clerk see that? Yeah. All right. Okay. There's only someone one second. Councilmember Kovar's amendment. Councilwoman Caustic, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. Anything else before line three-ninety-seven? Okay, then moving on. Section three-ninety-eight is public notice and comment on wireless communications facilities and communication support structure installation applications, and that goes to line four-sixteen.
I have something, Peter had noted, it, there's an extra word in line four-fifteen, provide should be deleted.
Can we just do that? All right. Then on, starting on section 417, exceptions, that goes to line 439. All right, and then line 440, right-of-way maintenance and administration fee to 433. Lines 44, oh, go ahead.
In line 441, again, thank you to Peter, it should say shall pay an annual right-of-way maintenance and administration fee, not the.
I had to turn you around. Councilmember Kovar?
That's the first place that appears.
Right.
So we have to say the rather than.
Okay. I think it used to appear earlier.
Yeah.
All right. So we're on line, can we just, okay, so line 444, annual certification. Councilwoman DiBala?
Yes, I would just like to ask Ken to walk us through how the initial permit period, the six months for installation, how that and the annual renewal, and the new permit, if there's a change, how they all work together.
The.
So here, we're talking about an annual fee and a certification. And earlier, we talk about the permit being, the initial permit being six months, then you have an annual fee and certification with the RF testing. And then in another section, which I think is, I wrote it down, 185I, it gives a bunch of conditions for when you would need a new permit.
I guess I would like to just interject that while those things should go on, I just want to note that I'm very happy to see the annual certification as specific time for ease of focus by staff, so that even though there may be sometimes people have duplicate things, so the month before, they may have gone through the end of a six-month, whatever, the more that this can be standardized, so that we can keep adequate records of it and not try to be monitoring, well, this one came on in May, so we need to do something the following May, is much better from our perspective. So there will be times when it's, we're following up on an individual one in whatever the time specified, but for the annual certification, it's very useful for us to have a specific month that we can focus on for staffing purposes.
Good. So, I mean, through, obviously, it wouldn't make sense if somebody installs something, you know, a week before the certification date. You know, we can specify in the regulations that if it's installed within a certain period of time before the certification, that they don't have to certify it for that year. But, and let me clarify, it's not a six-month permit. They have six months. If they get a permit, they have six months to complete the installation. But once it's installed, you know, given a possible exception for something that's installed right before the deadline, then they would have to just start right on the annual certifications after, you know, the first time it comes around.
So the implication of this is then, if there is no change, and the company, the testing shows that there's no change, including any co-location, and they pay their fee and so forth, then that's okay. But any actual modification, or a change of equipment, or anything that changes the installation, that would require a new permit.
Correct.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yes. Okay, I'm sorry. That's exactly the case.
Okay. Just making sure everybody's, thank you.
All right. So I think now we're on line 450. We're in line 450? 450, violations and enforcement, to line 464. Line 466, waiver of communications facilities and support structure fees for public benefits. Yeah.
Ken, the meeting that a few of us had last week, this came up, about waiver of communication facilities and support structures, fees for public benefit. Can you just look at some scenarios, or talk about some scenarios where that we could implement this? Because, I mean, it's not just with the actual small cell towers. This could be us, or the industry giving hotspots to residents in apartment buildings, but can you just talk about some of the things that you could see where we could use this clause?
But I honestly don't know enough about the technology to really know, you know, how we might use it, but the way the ordinance is structured, when we see a public benefit, we can look at, you know, what the costs that we'd incur to review the permit, and, you know, make a decision whether, you know, it's worth that cost to the city to facilitate that public benefit. But I'm sorry, I don't know exactly how we might, you know, when it might come into play.
Okay. All right, that's fair. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah. One of the other things on this provision that's come up, and I understand some people in the community have questions about it, is this is not aimed at finding a way to pull in small cell towers in a way that would potentially have a inconsistent impact and end up, you know, targeting lower-income areas. And one of the things that struck me in talking to people was whether there's a way, if it's to apply to, for example, to a specific building, as opposed to, it could even, in response to Councilmember Smith's question, it could even mean, you know, upgraded computers in the library, or whatever. But I think if we're looking at specific buildings, there ought to be a way that we could include in here some kind of consultation process with affected residents. And I don't know exactly how that would work, but.
I guess I would like to leave that kind of thing up to some language in the regulation, because then we could give more examples and things that don't really apply in ordinance. I appreciate what you're talking about, and people can make comments on that, but I think it helps, those would be kind of examples to give guidance about when this would apply, which could be useful. I appreciate that concern, but I think that it's very difficult to put the language in the ordinance without somehow skewing this, or undercutting what the point is.
So can we say that that's something we'll look at specifically in the regulations, then?
Sure.
Finding what to do?
And you guys will be discussing, you'll be looking at the regulations. People will look at the regulations, I have no doubt.
Okay.
All right. So then, that was section 466 to 474. The final section is on the regulations, 475 to 483. All right. Any other comments, changes that we missed that people want to go back to?
I have a brief comment.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I didn't.
Brief.
Yes. You know who you're talking to, come on. I've mentioned a number of times my concern about the utilities and other contractors and the way they operate in the community, and this legislation does, in addition to creating specific standards for communications facilities, also touch on, in certain ways, the general permitting authority. And just because of the importance of getting this done, I've agreed that not to try to push for something along those lines that would tighten up on the street repair and contracting and so on, that's been taking place, a lot of it, especially in North Tacoma, but elsewhere, including down Eastern Avenue and other wards. But trying to address that is not only something that we've included in our list of priorities for the state legislature, but also something that's on the council priorities as well, our list, and so I know we're due to update that this month, but I'd like to just ask the mayor if that's something, since it is in the council priorities, that we could try to get to, ideally before the spring construction slash excavation season starts.
I don't know what's going on in the lights tonight. All right, I have Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Kostic.
I would just like to thank all the residents who have helped, you know, tighten up this ordinance. We appreciate all your hard work on this. This has not been easy. Like I've said many times, we've been working on this for years. This issue was brought up to us, I think, first through the National League of Cities, so I really appreciate all the hard work that you guys dedicated to this. It is a tough, tough, technical issue. I would also say to Crown Castle and your clients that, you know, the digital divide is real, and it is very important, I think I can say for my colleagues and myself, that we make sure that there's equity throughout the city for residents that live in apartment buildings, or even single-family homes, if they cannot afford the best technology, that you guys can find some way to subsidize and provide it for them, not just the service itself, but the equipment that gets them access to the high-speed broadband. Thank you.
Councilman Kostic?
I want to echo Councilmember Smith's comments regarding thanks to the community and the number of hours of hard work that all of you have put into reviewing and commenting and coming to meetings and having meetings with us individually and talking with us. I can really see this as a collaborative effort, and that it's gotten a lot better because of your input on this. So I look forward to continuing those collaborations as we look into developing the admin regs and have some of those discussions. I hope we'll continue to have this collaboration. I also want to remind everyone that, in my mind, one of the gaps that still exists is in regard to the state right-of-ways that we have along all of our state highways. And if I could ask staff to try to figure out as best you can who is responsible for this at the state level. I've been trying to dig into this a little bit and haven't been particularly successful at finding out who is, what agency is, and what their requirements are. And I'm also a little bit unclear about whether I would assume that county zoning would still apply there, but I'm not sure about that. So I think there's still more that we need to know about the state highways and the state right-of-way moving forward.
Could I ask that, since we're hopefully about to pass this ordinance tonight, that we send a letter to our delegation with a copy of the ordinance and the resolutions, so they know the actions we took, with a request for our delegation to actually answer that question, to get the answer to that question for us, to find out which authority and who is responsible for cell towers in the state right-of-way. Thank you. Yes, and we should definitely, when we're done with this, send it to the county executive and county council. And you're not on.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think that one of the things that, you know, became clear about a recent application, it falls into play here, too, and that is that the Montgomery County Tower Commission approved a tower in the New Hampshire Avenue, or was intending to approve a tower in the New Hampshire Avenue right-of-way, which is a state highway in Prince George's County. So then the question about how do the zoning regulations for Prince George's County sometimes come into play as they affect our residents? So I think that that's something that would be added importance to the District 20 delegation, and perhaps our adjacent delegations, as well as the two county executives. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good question.
Councilwoman Circe?
I just want to echo my colleagues' appreciation of all of the residents that have reached out, gathered information, made calls. It's been so wonderful to hear from you all and learn from you all, quite frankly. So thank you very much. Another thing that I want to highlight, that the city manager just kind of spoke to, is how we work with the Tower Commission, how we work with the county staff, and how we can ensure that they understand the various rights-of-way, they understand what is Montgomery County, what is the City of Tacoma Park, what is Prince George's County, that there is clear communication between the county, so they're not approving towers through, you know, approving towers through their process, not only that have, you know, are in our rights-of-way, but also have direct implication to us, or encouraging others like Petco and whomever to make changes to towers that are in, or poles that are in our community, and not making us aware of it at all. So whatever we can do to reiterate the need for the City of Tacoma Park's presence on the Tower Commission, I think is critically important. Our area is a web of jurisdictions, and it's kind of hard to keep track if you don't live here. So it would be great if we can continue to press on that request. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DiBala?
Ditto on all that. And, yeah, I think we all know the work. This is not the end of it. This is, if anything, just the beginning. And I also appreciate the help that everybody is sitting in the room, and also people more too, who've contacted me individually with suggestions and comments and questions. I really appreciate all that. It's been a great process on this. And I'm looking forward to the next step. I look forward to continuing this process with the regulations, and hearing from all parties on the specifics of the regulation.
Councilmember Kovar?
I'm not going to say I'm looking forward to the regulations, but I do hope we'll be able to do it. Thanks to everybody for speaking now and previously, and to my colleagues, and the mayor, who really helped us have a structure for doing this, and the valuable input of the staff, and Ken for the 47th different version of the documents. I think we got to a pretty good place in the end. Thanks.
Thank you, and I'll just add my thanks as well to the residents who've worked on this, not even just our residents here in Tacoma Park, but we have actually gotten a huge help from residents in Montgomery County who've been working on this issue, and so has been very helpful. I do want to thank Mr. Campbell from Crown Castle for coming this evening, and I think as my colleague, Councilmember Smith, sent a message, I also do want to say that, I hope you understand that many of your clients have a bad history and a bad record of how they work in our city. And if you travel, and I have pictures on my phone, on any street in our city, you will see wires dangling from poles that we try constantly to get fixed, to get taken down. They basically litter our city. And so our skepticism on taking the word of these companies, given the track record they already have in our city, please just note, that's why we are so skeptical, and we feel it is of the utmost urgency that we pass an ordinance that makes sure that as the technology advances and cell towers are being put in our community, that we are, you know, making sure that we're protecting our community in all the ways that we can. So I, again, want to thank everyone for the work they're doing on this, and it is only just beginning. So with that, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll, since this is a second reading ordinance.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember DiBala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic? Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
All right. We are done for the moment with cell towers. Moving on to our next voting item, it's the appointment to the Commemoration Commission. Councilwoman Kostic, you asked that this be moved.
Councilwoman Kostic, you asked that this be moved from our consent agenda, would you like to speak to it? Would I turn you on?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm generally supportive of this, this specific appointment, and I think Fred absolutely should be appointed to the committee. What I wanted to specifically address was the discussion we had last month regarding age minimums for committees and our need to return to that discussion as soon as possible. I noticed in the cover sheet for this item that there are five vacancies after this appointment on the Commemoration Commission, so we really need to try to seek out some other members for the commission. And the racial equity note specifically noted that we need to seek more diverse applicants as well, and I think that would be really, really advantageous in terms of creating a commission that provides a broad representation of the community. We do, I want to call everyone's attention to, we do have an applicant who applied, who is from Ward Three, who has not been appointed because he's twelve years old and is sort of lost in limbo in our discussions regarding age limits. So I'd just like to, I hope that we can move that along and can have an opportunity to discuss the age discussions in the future.
Councilwoman Kostic, I just want to clarify one thing. I think when the council had the conversation, we discussed for the time being until we, having the appointments to committees being age sixteen and over, and that was communicated to?
My recollection was that we asked the youth council to provide a recommendation and that the clerk was going to provide us with some information about the types of things that they typically voted on.
Yeah, the sense of the council was that it was sixteen and older, and I think things have been communicated to the...
I thought so as well, and there may be some misunderstanding. I thought it was sort of settled, the situation was sort of settled.
Okay, I guess I had a very different, I guess I had a very different impression of where we ended on that. Yeah.
We don't want to leave anyone in limbo, especially someone who is attending meetings and things. So thank you very much for raising that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who would like to move the appointment to the Commemoration Commission? Councilwoman Searsy? Councilmember Siemens, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Who would like to move the consent agenda?
So moved.
Councilmember Smith, second. Councilmember Kovar? Do we need, yes, we need a roll call.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dabala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Searsy?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart? Yes. All right, that takes us through our voting session. Now we will have public comments on any other topics this evening. Mr. Lovelace, we will get you the microphone, one second, it's coming. All right, go ahead.
Okay, everybody, this is Pat Lovelace, your official speech delegate. I want to ask, welcome you people back from the recess. You know, I hope you had a great time. And also I want to ask about the possibility of setting up some hygiene stations for the homeless, so they can do their laundry and do their bathing and stuff like that, you know, because I'm sure that a lot of them out there tonight would really appreciate a nice hot shower. And I'd like to see what we can do in Tacoma Park, setting up some hygiene stations and possibly a sober center. Maybe when they close down the hospital, we can use part of it as a sober center to help people recover from drug addiction and alcohol, if that's possible. And also I want to tell everybody out there, a nice thing happened the other day, and I want to tell everybody like this, happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, dear Kate Stewart, our mayor. Happy birthday to you. And I also want to announce that we have some demonstrations coming up about the shutdown on the government that are ongoing, so keep your eyes and ears open and attend as many as you can, support our federal workers. Also, Martin Luther King's birthday is coming up, and we are going to start dedicating that Day for Peace, and what we can do to make this country a better place, if it's possible, I think we should be doing that, because his birthday is on the fifteenth, and we're having the parade and stuff in southeast DC on the twenty-first. And I'd like to invite everybody to come down to that. And mainly, there's also a women's march coming up on the nineteenth of this month, you know, down on the Mall. So, and it's, we've been doing this ever since the inauguration, and I'd like to see us men getting up and start supporting our women. You know, we don't want to see them abused, we don't want to see them discriminated against, and above all, I want to see an end to domestic abuse and child abuse and sexual harassment. I want to see what we can do to stop that. So anyway, I just want to welcome you people in and say, happy new year, everybody, happy new year. Love it, love it, love it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lovelace. Any other public comments this evening?
Hold still.
Mayor Jay?
No.
Yeah, hi, forgive my awkwardness. My name's Sean O'Neill, I live at seven oh six Sligo Creek Parkway. I've been a resident for fifteen years. I've never been to a council meeting, I don't even know if this is the right forum, so I'll just try to keep it brief and just give you the facts. Twenty eighteen was an historically wet year. My house is at the bottom of a lot of other, bigger houses. I'm the house closest to the creek, it's right across Sligo Creek Parkway. I'm in between Jackson and Aspen. Since November, my sump pump has not quit running. I devised the system, or my contractor, rather, retaining walls with a lot of PVC pipe. We had a lot of water in the basement years ago. Anyway, I'm channeling water. Literally, I get everyone's water in my yard and I have a four-inch PVC pipe. Anyway, I don't want to get off track, about a week before Christmas, it was a circus in Sligo Creek. What happens? The water is coming from the drainage system, goes across the road, the tires pick it up, take it for a block or so, and it just creates a treacherous ice field. So there were a couple of accidents. Shortly thereafter, I received a notice from, and again, I'm not here to complain or throw anyone under the bus, everyone has been wonderful that I've talked to, but Ian Chamberlain, I was cited for an ordinance violation for creating a hazard on Sligo Creek Parkway. I was, the ordinance said I would be, I was given thirty days to remedy it, and I was told a thousand dollars for each instance. So, anyway, it's been a lot of sleepless nights, I've done whatever I humanly can do, we're talking about controlling water. I've cut my drainage pipe, I've capped it, it now, my front yard is now a swamp, I've rerouted my sump pump discharge valve into my wife's lovely garden, that's now a swamp. My concern is not the money I'm going to have to spend to remedy this, it's public safety. I was told the road belongs to the park service, not to Tacoma Park, so sort of like, not my job. Every time it ices up, it's treacherous. Anyway, I'm in a process of trying to remedy what I can do. I think a dry well might work, but I was told if it doesn't work, I would have to, my time up.
Well, I feel like the best way to remedy the situation would be if we could actually, the woman's sitting right there, if you could give your information to her, then I think we could look...
I don't know where to go, so I just...
No, 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 you're in exactly the right place. And we've heard, unfortunately, we've heard it before, and we're going to be actually talking about stormwater issues tonight, and you're in exactly the right place because our head of public work is right here, and she is the woman we want to give that information to. So thank you for coming in.
Thank you for listening to my sad tale.
Thank you. Ms. Machui, would you like to?
Hi, everybody, thanks for coming. Mary Jane Machui, Ward Two, hi. I'd like to say today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and thank you, I don't, thank you, officer, and all the other officers who serve us. Second, I would like us to remember our low-income homeowners. A lot of people have the same problem, similar to the gentleman just spoke, but we cannot afford to remediate it. I was told over thirteen thousand dollars to keep my basement from deteriorating and my house with it. The foundation is getting, taking, deteriorating. Please remember, some of us are unable to pay for these repairs on older homes and are moving out, including some of my friends, which has really hurt, including two members of parents of special needs, both single black American women, who I'm really angry had to leave because they could not afford this living here. Our neighborhood is becoming less economically and racially diverse, and it's really hurting me. Our city practices, including council membership, the tree ordinance and sidewalk policies favor those with higher incomes. And I just want to say, that had nothing to do with special needs so much, except that we tend to have less money. But I just want to say, I'm parent of special needs adults, if anyone would like to join us, you don't have to be a parent, just a friend or a family member, and we welcome you, no matter what your race or income. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other public comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, then we will now move on to our, nope, I keep doing this, then we'll move on to council comments. I want to move us on. I know, I am, first night back. Councilmember Dabala?
Yeah, happy new year, everybody, it's good to be back. And I just, I was going to save this for the stormwater section, but Mr. O'Neill is not alone in having a lot of water that didn't start with him, that came down the private part of the hill, not the road, and that's something we will need to deal with, we will talk later tonight about, start talking about stormwater. And I just would like to point out that this was an extraordinarily wet year, and everything that I'm seeing says that this kind of rain pattern is the new normal because of climate change. So just wanted to mention that. On another note, I wonder if Councilmember Siemens is going to talk about Martin Luther King Day plans?
I'm sorry, I don't have the information tonight.
Oh, okay. So in the morning on Martin Luther King Day, am I jumping ahead of somebody else who's going to say this?
No, no, I just coughed, I need more water.
Okay, Monday, January twenty-first, it is now a tradition in Tacoma Park, a day of service in the morning, work projects throughout the town, information will be circulating about exactly where to meet, but save the date, save the morning, and then save the afternoon slash evening, five to seven, for a community celebration and potluck dinner, which is an amazing experience, both of them. So we hope to see you there. Thank you.
All right, nope, you're, Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. It's great to be back, happy new year, everyone. I just want to let Ward Five residents know that the new restaurant on Flower and Erie is open.
That's great.
They are serving breakfast, lunch, and dinner, so if you get an opportunity, it is the end cap, you cannot miss it, so please check out the new restaurant. It is a West African restaurant.
And...
Oh, was it February eighth? February eighth, the mayor and I are going to host a lunch at this new establishment, so if you get an opportunity, please drop by. The other thing that I want residents to know, that LED lights are being replaced in the ward. If you need shielding on the fixtures because the light is just too bright, it's being directed into your home, please contact Darryl Braithwaite's office, she could help making sure that the shielding is placed on the fixture. So I put out some information on my social media channels, you can get the link to how you can make that request, but please don't allow the light to just linger and disrupt your sleep patterns. So thank you very much, and someone else can go.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Kovar? Nope, nope, you're not yet, Councilwoman Kostic. Sorry, the lights are really messed up tonight.
Happy new year, first of all, to everyone. Just a couple of items, the legislative session in Annapolis starts tomorrow, and we will be, yeah, and we will be following what's happening there, and based on the things that we have previously identified as issues that we want to focus on as a city, we'll be weighing in in Annapolis when there are opportunities or when things come up that we're concerned about. So the deputy city manager in the past has provided updates, so I expect he'll probably continue to provide some updates at council meetings as that gets started. In terms of the tree ordinance revisions, the mayor mentioned earlier that there was an article in the newsletter this month that just came out, that Councilmembers Smith, Dabala, and I put together, and we have been in the process, staff have been developing a survey to have residents fill out and provide some feedback on, and I think that will be posted soon, I don't think it's been posted quite yet, but it will be up soon. So I encourage people to take a look at that and share your feedback and experiences with the tree ordinance, and any comments or suggestions that you have. And then finally, I wanted to share a little bit of information from a meeting I went to last week, it's the Access for All Committee, which I chair, which is part of the Transportation Planning Board for the region. And we had three really fascinating presentations that I will send around to my colleagues and post in my weekly update this coming week, all related to equity and transportation, and specifically focused, two of them focused specifically on older adults and adults with disabilities and their access to transportation. And there was a lot of really interesting information, one was done by the USDOT and the other by an organization called NADTC, which has specifically developed some outreach information to help people with disabilities and older adults access information about transportation and their needs. And there was a lot of information that came out about the limitations that people face when they have disabilities, are not able to drive themselves or to easily use public transportation, and the ways that that really limits their access to life in general. And I think that's, those are some things we can think about a little more as a city as we're doing some planning. And then the other presentation was related to the Visualized 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan, which the TPB passed back in November, and now TPB staff are going through the process of doing an environmental justice evaluation of it, and that specifically focuses on what have been identified as equity emphasis areas within the region. And for the most part, that does not include Tacoma Park, a very small portion of one of them is included in Tacoma Park, but I think the general concepts are still very applicable to us, and thinking broadly about the way that we as a city interact with transportation broadly, and the equity and the accessibility of transportation for people in terms of accessing a job within a short distance of their home, and being able to exit, to walk or bike to a metro station or a bus stop, and those sorts of things. So I will share that... in terms of accessing a job within a short distance of their home, and being able to exit to walk or bike to a metro station or a bus stop, and those sorts of things. So, I will share that information, and I encourage people to take a look at it, there's some very interesting and useful data. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, and happy to be back, and Happy New Year to everybody. A few quick things I wanted to run through on the North Tacoma Report subgroup. Number one, thanks to staff, including Daryl Braithwaite, for working at WSSC to figure out what was causing the sewery smell behind Newark Avenue, it sounds like that's being worked on now, I'm not sure how long it's going to take. On the utilities, maybe staff could get back, on the resurfacing, or what the condition of the surface of Tacoma Avenue and Fenton will be, the work has stopped there for a while now, but the condition of the street is really bad, and I don't know whether there's plans to address that, or wait until later. On the trees, there were some trees that were cut down, you might be making reference to this, Suzanne, but if there's documentation available on the status of those trees. And then a couple of, just on the trees, I was very concerned that the three that were cut down on Fenton, because this is the area that we were close to the intersection with Tacoma and Fenton, that we were fighting to preserve the tree conditions there as part of the Montgomery College project, and obviously, trees can be replanted, but I still think that when we get into the tree ordinance, we might want to look at some way of having a process for handling trees that are in the public area. I think you're going to be talking about the dog bite, but it'd be good to just get a sense for the timing on when we can hear on that. And I have heard that there, there's been, there was a series of robberies, maybe just in one day or two days in North Tacoma. There may have been several, so if there's any information available on that. Two other quick things, thank you. On Tacoma Junction, I know the city manager is going to be talking about the process for more, a better process for updates from NDC, but I don't know if there's any sort of update specifically on where things stand with the submission. Okay, and then lastly, and this is just following up on the comment that Councilmember Kostic made, as we move forward on the committees and the commissions and the resident bodies, figuring out some way to reach out more to encourage a wider, more diverse membership of those groups is something we just need to try to find ways to do. So, I, I supported the two appointments today, who I think are well-qualified, but I think we need to try harder in that area, so, thanks.
Councilwoman Searcy.
Great, Happy New Year, everyone, I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday break. I want to thank Daryl Braithwaite for all of her patience as Ward Six underwent the LED conversion. So, for those residents that did have shielding requests, we have the list, we're checking it twice. And Daryl is, is, is doing her thing, checking out the, the different locations, so I will provide folks with an update on the status as I become aware of them, but I just want to let everyone know that all of the addresses and requests that I've received and that Daryl has received, we have a list, and we're going through them. Just as an FYI, Purple Line Construction on University Boulevard between Riggs and Adelphi will be underway over the next couple of weeks, there will be some land closures, so if you head in that direction, just be mindful of that. And also, my other life, I am a federal employee, and so I, I, I share in the frustration of those that are shut down right now. And so, want to just put in a plug for Councilmember Huckers' Potluck on Friday at Blair High School from six-thirty to nine, it's just a great way to kind of be around others and vent together. So, that's all I have, thanks so much.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize for being late to the meeting tonight, but my wife and I were at the Rally Against the Shutdown, hosted by Congressman Raskin, and Senator Van Hollen was also there. You know, it sounds like the Republicans are going to continue imposing this hardship on the federal workers and on the rest of the people, many other people, for, and it may be go on for some time. And I would hope that we on the council could think about any ways that we might be able to help buffer some of the impacts, especially from our most vulnerable neighbors. And so, I think it's something we should be talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the thing about going last is that sometimes people say all the things you were going to say, yeah, so, which is great. So, I will, this, tonight, I will just say thank you very much to everyone. And if you haven't checked it out, we have a blog up that we put up at the end of the year that goes through some of the things we did in 2018, and a sneak peek into 2019. So, if you want to take a look at that as we get underway, please do that. But I think I'm just going to turn it over to our city manager now. I guess, thank you, Councilwoman Dabala, so, the other thing is, we did put up this afternoon a blog in response to President Trump's Oval Office address last night. We actually put out a statement after the election two years ago, when he took office. Because of the increase in hateful language and misinformation, particularly around immigration, it spurred us to, to, you put out a statement again today, recommitting ourselves to our values here in the city. And I will just say personally, listening to the speech last night and thinking about our community and the people who live here, the people who are our neighbors, our friends, our residents, and the terrible lies and mischaracterization of people who are seeking to come to our country and who live in our country was devastating. And so, I think it's important that people who live in our community know what we stand for, and know that we are a sanctuary city, that not only the city council, our city staff, our police department, everyone who works for the city is committed to these values of not only just saying we are a welcoming and diverse community, but really working to be that. So, thank you for the reminder, and please check that out as well. I will now turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you very much, and if we're talking about blogs, I also like to give a plug to our deputy city manager, Jason Dan Weber, for his newsletter piece about the budget process. And we've received a number of citizen inquiries about how do we think about the budget. And I think that this was an excellent overview for people to kind of get up to speed. You will see lots more information on budget, but it's nice to kind of put it into perspective because it always catches people by surprise, and it's something that's of interest as people get their property assessments. For those who are property owners, property assessments recently went out, some went up, some went down. And we're getting maps together that show some of the trends of that in our community. I do not know what it means for our, our revenue that's planned to come in if we had the constant yield rate, but we'll be talking about it quite a bit. Also want to note that today we had some snow, there's real possibility Saturday night into Sunday that there will be snow. And I would like people to be prepared for that, sign up for the Tacoma Park Alert System in case there's library closings or other kinds of things that happen. Or there's slick roads where there might be water, and then that freezes, and we want to make sure that we get the word out. So, there's that. In talking about the impacts of the government shutdown, we've done some internal discussions about what that impact might be for city operations, and I think the element, the area where we're most concerned are for families that use the childcare programs. Because they are expensive, and there's periodic payments that people make, and if they're having difficulty making those payments, either as a federal employee or a contractor, we would like to work with them and make sure that they're not keeping their kids out of the programs or not participating in programs because of that. So, we're trying to do some outreach to folks, but also, people may be hesitant to sign their kids up for summer camp, or that kind of thing. And we want to encourage people not to not participate. Even if money is not available, we have scholarship programs, so we really do want to work with people and encourage that. The only other thing, other than some slowdown of some grant report reviewing and that kind of thing, is that the eVerify system does not work, so one of the, you know, one of the little amazing things about saying we need a border wall, but then the eVerify system doesn't work, is that we're not able to use that, it is not hindering our processing of incoming applicants. We still do our investigation, as we do, but we will need to then run it through eVerify once that system comes back online.
Just with respect to the federal benefits, I think I read that the SNAP benefits, so-called food stamps, are being extended. But I know there's some concerns about the treatment of people who get some sort of subsidization for their housing, and so, if there are other, not, not so much that the federal workers don't get paid, but individuals who are beneficiaries, can they approach the city at least to see whether there might be help for them, I don't know whether we can, but...
What about the emergency fund? We want people to reach out if they're having an issue, and we'll see if we can direct them however. We've also are doing outreach to, for example, landlords because of some of the not processing of some of the housing subsidies. So, we are trying to do some outreach where it is, you know, we, we're being made aware of them. But if you hear something, please let me know, and we'll see if what we can do, we're, we're trying to be conscientious about that.
I would also just note, Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac are treating mortgages that they have as if this was a natural disaster. So, if folks do have a mortgage, they can go to both of those websites and type in "federal government employee," I think, and then see what things they have there, so that's also something else.
So, we're, we're keeping it in mind, if we come up with other things that we find that are affecting us that we haven't identified so far, or that you think are an issue that we should be addressing, please let me know. I want to, I'd like to talk a little bit about a December incident involving a police dog, one of our police dogs. In early December, there was a terrible incident where a Tacoma Park police dog bit a Washington DC resident. The police officer who works with the trained police dog was in pursuit of people who had stolen a vehicle. The police dog acted in an unexpected way and bit a resident walking in the area. The incident occurred just across the line into Washington DC. We were and are taking the matter very seriously. The police dog has been recertified since the incident, but we have kept the dog out of service. We assisted the victim at the time, we're working to address the matter with her. Metropolitan Police Department officers were on the scene, and we alerted DC elected officials about the incident at the time. And we've been in court, cooperation with them since the time as well. Investigations are being conducted internally by the Tacoma Park Police Department and by the Metropolitan Police Department Internal Affairs Unit. Our investigation is just about done, but we will be hussing along any of our findings and information to them. We have been cooperating with, with the Metropolitan Police Department. Once both investigations have been completed, a statement regarding the findings will be issued. So, I just wanted, we've had a number of conversations about that, but I wanted to just make it public. It kind of happened at a, at a transition time, so we didn't get the statement out in the same public way that we would normally do. Was there a question about that, Councilmember?
No, I just wanted to know what we thought the timing was, and I think you've done your best to answer that.
My, my guess is that ours will be quite soon, the, I think, the Washington DC investigation will take a couple of weeks.
Question.
Yes.
I sent you an email about our alert system, can you remind me, can you get alerts through telephone numbers, or is it primarily through email addresses?
We can get it through telephone numbers, we can have it both, a verbal call, it can be a, you know, an automated call, but a verbal call, text message, or email.
Okay, and the situation was trying to, I guess, provide more information faster to residents?
Oh, you mean for, so for situations? I think the technology is not the issue, the issue is making sure that we have good coverage and we are, we kind of know how to process information out, it's being looked at very carefully.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Like to note that we've been in long conversations about the Tacoma Park Middle School Fields, Lee Jordan Field. It will be unusable February 2019 through November 2020. We are looking, we're talking with them, but I think that's, those seem to be the times. I appreciate the outreach from the school system, from the school principal, as well as our staff that have been in corp, in communication with them. As to the Tacoma Junction Development Project, we've been trying to update our website about that. We have a sub-page on our Tacoma Junction Development Project that's about the current county development review process. On that sub-page, we also will be posting regularly updated information from Neighborhood Development Company about the progress of their application. One, the first update has been posted, it says when they submitted their initial application online to the county for review. It has not been accepted yet, it's kind of gotten back and forth, it's, they're getting more information. It looks like it would be relatively soon when it's accepted, and at that point, there would be quite a lot of information made public. Many people attended the pre-submission meeting and signed up for updates, that information will come from the county to them. But we'll have lots of that same information as well. So, just wanted to let you know that that's something to monitor, and we'll give highlights if there's an issue. Wanted to note about traffic calming on Hilltop Road, based on residents' requests for traffic calming, the council adopted Resolution 2018-38. Pursuant to the resolution, the city installed some painted lines as a first step, and looked at a couple of options. Data recently collected by the police department showed that the steps we've taken so far haven't done much to deter speeding, therefore, we will be installing a speed hump as per the resolution, so, just kind of making it public, but wanted that to be announced. Concerning information on trees removed on Tacoma Avenue and Fenton Street. About a week ago, five trees were removed in the City Rites of Way on Tacoma Avenue and Fenton Street. And there were some questions about what was the history of that. While meeting on-site with Pepco contractors doing work in the area, our staff noticed dead limbs on the trees, notified the contractor that we had to do tree pruning. While doing the pruning, the contractor identified more serious rot issues with the trees, which were brought to the attention of staff. Upon examination, the trees were determined to be in significant decline and hazardous. Three separate arborists did the assessments. Montgomery College has agreed to replant trees along Tacoma Avenue and Fenton Street as part of their tree mitigation plan related to the proposed structure, construction of the new math-science building. And we will be working closely with the college's landscape architect to develop the plan for the tree planting. This is a situation where these are city trees that we noticed were in decline, and we needed to take action because they were hazardous. And so, I appreciate that people sometimes want a different approach to them, but I think it was handled appropriately. And I'm happy to follow up as we talk about the tree ordinance in the future, about any options that you might want to consider.
Like this, would the minimum replanting be five trees, since five trees were taken down?
So, on that, I'm not sure about that, but for any development that's a regular development, it could be many trees per tree. So, it, it, there's a calculation.
I didn't know if it was a one-for-one.
It's a one thing if it's a city tree, it's another thing if it's, for Montgomery College, it's, it's not one-for-one, it's a, it's a much greater number.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to give some kudos to two of our police officers, Private First Class Brian Hernandez and Private Henoch Attacult received a commendation recommendation. And it's, it's a nice note that we received from a resident. After responding to a call of a resident suffering and then succumbing to a heart attack, a family member of the deceased wrote to us, "Both of your officers showed the utmost respect and professionalism on the scene. Their genuine care and concern for the members of my family was truly touching. These two officers comforted my family and offered all of their sympathy and support. I cannot express how grateful I am that they are the two." I cannot express how grateful I am that they are the two that responded to this scene." So I want to thank two officers for the good work during this difficult situation and their positive reflection it's had on our police department and our city. So it's wonderful when I get those notes. I'm sorry for the family, obviously. And I want to note that over the holidays, we've hired two new staff people that you may be coming in contact with. One is Donna Wright, our new communications specialist. A number of you have met her. And starting this week is Samira Cook Gaines, who's our Economic Development Manager. And she'll be here next week. So looking forward to having you meet her and get, working with both of them. That's it, thank you.
Terrific, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to our work session. And I think I'm on stormwater. I'm going to turn it over to our head of public works. Come join us.
Yes, please do. The slide presentation we have is on the laptop here, and so we'll go from there. Earlier last year, the city advertised for and the council awarded a contract to Black and Beach for our stormwater, initial stormwater evaluation. The purpose of this particular piece of work was related to taking a look at the existing impervious area by lot in the city and determining whether our existing rate structure reflected accurately what the goal of the system was and to update our records and review property records for that work. Is it this one or? Again, in the interest of time, I actually want to start with this one and then we'll go back, just to kind of get everybody in the same wavelength. When we're talking about stormwater, we basically base our fee structure on the amount of impervious area on a lot. So the impervious area refers to compacted or covered with material that is resistant to infiltration by water. So that includes a house, a driveway, a gravel lot, a shed. Anything that provides a resistance to water within a property is considered an impervious area. And that amount of impervious area is the basis for our stormwater fee because one would rightly assume that the more impervious area you have on your lot, the more likely runoff from your lot is going to, water from rain is going to run off your lot and then into nearby properties, public right of way, or be captured by the stormwater system. When our stormwater utility fee was established, we used a basic unit called the equivalent residential unit. And it's going to be important for us all to remember what this is about as we have this conversation. What it is, is it's the median impervious area per residential property, for single-family property. So back at that time, our consultant at the time, who was, I believe, Greenhorn and Ameri, or CH2M Hill, I'm sorry, yeah, CH2M Hill evaluated the information that was available in county and city records related to footprint of homes on properties and looked across all the single-family properties and established the median impervious area per lot, which at that point was 1,228 square feet. So that equivalent residential unit is the basis for our stormwater fee. So currently, all single-family properties are charged based on an assumption of one equivalent residential unit. And any non-residential properties, which include multifamily, commercial property, and institutional property, are charged based on their actual impervious area divided by the ERU and then multiplied by the rate. So that information is there in the site. Our current rate is $92 per equivalent residential unit. As you may recall, in fiscal year 18, we did a presentation asking the council for consideration of an increase in the rate. So at that point, we went from $55 to $92. And that was largely geared towards making sure we could accomplish the myriad of projects that we have in the queue. We have a five-year CIP related to stormwater projects. Some of those are just general maintenance and good housekeeping practices that we need to implement to keep our system functioning. The other are actually new facilities, both traditional facilities of inlets and catch basins and pipes, and then also new infiltration and treatment facilities required to meet the state and federal mandates of treating 20% of the non-treated runoff from impervious area in our city. So then going back to the prior slide, what Black and Beach took a look at in their initial evaluation was first to determine what the system-wide impervious area is in the city and to basic, make some recommendations related to that basic stormwater unit of measure, whether or not we maintain the equivalent residential unit, or look to some other method of establishing a base unit for our stormwater fee. They also confirmed the amount of revenue we need to run our program, which are, we had already said, our expectation is that we generate about $700,000 annually in order to cover the cost of capital projects and maintenance projects that we know of. And they would evaluate the number of billing units in the city and from that devise the system-wide stormwater rate, which would then be billed to both the single-family as well as other commercial, multifamily, and institutional properties. So some of the key issues that exist with using existing impervious area for billing, obviously, impervious area can change over time as a result of development expansion. I mean, in a city like ours, it's largely built out, you have less of that change than in some other places where there's massive amounts of development going on. The other thing that we've seen, and this has been a reflection of the massive increase in technology and information available relative to properties and GIS and aerial photography and now LiDAR. So we were able to get very recent data that Black and Beach used to evaluate our impervious area. Back when it was first done, which was in the late 80s, they used aerial maps and the county property records. So now with the LiDAR and the GIS and the rest of the systems that we had, they were able to really drill down to very much a lot-by-lot look at properties to evaluate impervious area. And if you don't update your impervious area, obviously, it becomes inaccurate. The goal of equity, which is really what was driving a system where you have a stormwater fee that you charge based on pervious areas, to get at an equity of cost recovery. It's also for a system like ours to be able to have all institutions, some tax-free as well as others, contribute to the stormwater utility fee. So because it's a fee, nonprofit, or churches, or institutions that may otherwise not pay property taxes, are still, still pay the fee. And so it's important to update it. And of course, ours wasn't updated for more than 15 years. So they conducted their analysis and their ERU study. They, we wanted to get, capture the magnitude of change in the impervious area since the last evaluation and wanted to understand what that meant for the equivalent residential unit, our central factor in billing. Also taking a look at the potential revenue impact as that impervious area is updated and then to further understand the policy decisions that may be needed to be made and potential solutions. Again, they used a significant amount of information, spent a lot of time talking to the county, and really combed through our database. So we made sure that we did identify some additional properties that we had originally been billing as single-family that were multifamily or commercial that were single-family. So there's still, even though we've worked at it over time, there were still some errors that they found. So they were able to gather all the parcel data, aggregate it by customer class, meaning single-family, multifamily, commercial, or institutional, and compile the impervious area in each of those classes and then develop estimates by class for what the equivalent residential unit was. And compiled our financial information, our revenue requirements, and then took a look at what the impact of the information they gathered was. So basically, some of the findings, significant increase in our impervious area, which was not so much a surprise that there would be some difference, but the magnitude was fairly stunning. So our current, our previous equivalent residential unit was 1,228 square feet. It is now updated to 2,116 square feet, so an increase of almost 900 square feet. Total citywide, 4.9 million square feet more impervious area than we had previously assumed. And we also were able to identify diversity within the residential factor itself, and I have a slide that goes into that to some degree. So as you're increasing your residential, equivalent residential unit, because all single-family properties were billed the same and that, that factor was used for commercial, multifamily, and others, when it increases, when it goes from a figure of a little over 1,000 to a little over 2,000, if you apply that unit to a commercial property, you're basically going to be reducing your billable units for that commercial property. So that has some very significant impacts on revenue generation, which is not the direction we need to go. So if we were to maintain the existing $92 equivalent residential unit rate, we would have a decrease in revenue, which wouldn't serve any of our purposes. And I think to reiterate that, the example on the bottom there, for a 10,000-square-foot commercial property, at the old rate of 1,228 square feet, it had a little over eight equivalent residential units. So that $92 fee would be multiplied by those eight units. That would be what they would be billed. Under the new number, that 10,000-square-foot property would be divided by 2,116, meaning under five equivalent residential units. So the rate that they would be charged would be reduced. Not that their square footage is reduced at all, it's just because our system is based on a unit factor of equivalent residential unit, their charge would be reduced. This kind of goes into it in a little more detail. The increase in impervious area was as a result of development over time, but more importantly, it was actually because we were able to gather information beyond the building footprint. So driveways, sidewalks, concrete pads, sheds, walkways, which hadn't previously been captured. That's really the main driver of that increase in impervious area. In the past, it had been based primarily on the building footprint. So you see in the chart there that the gross area of a property for single-family residential property is a little over 7,000 square feet and the impervious area on that 7,000 square feet is a little over 2,000 compared to the average. We tend to use the median for these calculations versus the average.
Point of clarification, that's sidewalks and driveways on the property.
Right.
That's not sidewalks like the public sidewalk.
Yep, within the private property itself. Probably better, should I call them lead walks and pathways on the property. Let me catch up here. This is a chart that we found very interesting because we have a much clearer view of the data. They did this chart to show the distribution of impervious area in single-family properties. So you can see, we range from a small of 500 square foot to a large of 9,000 square foot. So in our current system, where we're billing all single-family properties the same, there's quite a range from the smallest to the largest. We asked the folks from Black and Beach if this was fairly similar to what they find in other jurisdictions, and they said basically, you get a bell curve anytime you look at this, but that ours is a little more compressed than they've seen in other places. And so our jump from small to the real majority of properties, which are the 2,000 and 2,500 square foot, they would have expected a, you know, a little more, yeah, a little more gradual increase on the left side. So it's, you know, what you find is this is pretty typical bell curve, however, ours is a little compressed.
Yeah, we did, never mind. The numbers on the left.
Yeah, the parcel count is there on the x-axis. So what would be the revenue impact if we were to apply the existing rate to the new equivalent residential units? So you see there at the top, under estimated billable units, that's SWBL, it's Stormwater Building Layer Residential, so that's your single-family residential. In the past, we had 3,538 billing units. With the updated information, we have 3,476. Again, a slight reduction due to some wrong classification of those properties. For this stormwater billing layer, commercial, which includes multifamily, commercial, and institutional, we used to bill 4,128 units. It's now been reduced to 2,977, again, based on that larger equivalent residential unit factor. So we go from existing billing units of 7,666 to a reduction of 6,453. So you see there at the bottom, if you apply that $92 charge per the factor there, you, what we had been generating just slightly over $700,000 would be reduced to something under $600,000. This is a pretty good example of the difference between the old data and the new data. So on the left there, you see basically the building footprint on those properties is what had been considered the impervious area. On the right, you see what was, is captured now. The buildings are larger, there's been additions, or the information was incomplete in the county's tax records. And the lead walks and pathways and sheds and driveways are now captured. So that kind of is an example there. On the one property at the corner, what had been considered an impervious area of 601, with the updated data, is actually over 1,000 square feet of impervious area, whereas the gross area of the lot remains the same. And then an example of an institutional facility, this is the hospital. In the past, there was an assumption of an impervious area of 267,000, almost 268,000 square feet. In the updated data, it's over 341,000 square feet. And again, with the gross area remaining the same. And that's largely because of the new data, we have the ability to really drill down to all the impervious areas. So some of the issues at this rates. The benefits of updating the impervious area is, of course, maintaining equity of cost recovery and make sure that we have a defensible technical basis for our fee. We want to, when we say we're billing based on impervious area, we want to make sure we're billing based on impervious area. And it is the utility best practice for stormwater fees. In order to do this, we're going, and it requires staff resources and time to validate the impervious area and update the billing system. Obviously, we'll need a vigorous public outreach campaign to communicate the changes and the updates and the reasons. And the rate for the system will need to change. So we've got some options ahead of us to consider. With this change in the equivalent residential unit factor, with this increase, we could continue to use the ERU as our basis of billing and have all single-family properties billed the same and use that new equivalent residential unit factor of 2,116 for all other multifamily, commercial, and institutional properties. In order to make that work, we would have to increase the rate. The other option is to take a look at some other factor besides the equivalent residential unit, which if nothing else is hard to say over and over again. And instead, look at a basic unit, say 100 square feet or 500 square feet. So rather than this median impervious area for stormwater, single-family properties, we could take a look at a unit structure that's built on, people are billed on 100-square-foot of impervious area, or 500-square-foot of impervious area is x-charge. However many of those units you have, that's what you get charged. So that would open up the option of using that billing system across the board, not having a standard fee for all single-family properties, but applying that uniformly throughout all lots, whether they're single-family, commercial, institutional. The other option that we have is to look at a tiered structure. So it's kind of a hybrid between your equivalent residential unit and a 100 or 500 hundred square foot assumption. You would establish tiers up to a thousand square feet, a thousand to twenty-five hundred square feet, twenty-five to five thousand. You'd basically set up tiers, and wherever the properties fell out within that tier, they get billed that rate. It again, requires modifications to the building changes, building system, but it does provide, provide more equity, equity than a uniform rate for all single-family properties, and makes it a little less tedious, so you're not billing each, each property, doesn't have to be calculated, you basically are putting them in tiers, so there's simplification of a slight amount to the billing system. But really, in honesty, once these charts get set up, you know, you set up a computer program that says what the square footage is on the properties, and it calculates it. But now that the county does our billing, we will have to work very closely with them to make sure that whatever is selected is communicated and implemented across the county. They were able to handle our standard single-family charge and the per-unit charge for our commercial, multifamily, and residential, so there's no reason that they, to think that they can't. So it just opens up some opportunities for us to consider, especially with this additional information of a fairly wide range of square footage of impervious area within our single-family lair. So what would the impact of changes be? Obviously, we've up, we update the impervious area, we're modifying the basic stormwater unit of charge, now we have to change the residential rate structure. So if the ERU was kept and changed to two thousand one hundred and sixteen square feet, our system-wide ERU rate would have to be raised to a hundred and three dollars to maintain that seven hundred thousand dollar revenue level that we're trying to get to. If we were to go to a basic stormwater unit of, say, five hundred square feet per property, that system-wide rate would be twenty-five dollars per five hundred square feet. So the way you establish the rate structure there is, you could, you could still do a uniform residential charge if you want, all single-family the same, and then non-residential based on either ERU or a basic stormwater rate. You could individually calculate the rate for each parcel based on either, either of those factors. Or you could do the tiered residential charge, where you step it up based on some set quantities. So an example of that same property we looked at before, that had a thousand and forty-seven square feet of impervious area, if we had a uniform charge, where we were charging all single-family the same, we would actually bill them a hundred and eight dollars and forty-seven cents, slightly over that one oh three that I mentioned. If we used a, the ERU of two thousand one hundred and sixteen square feet, you see that property at just a little under one thousand and fifty square feet is about half of a billing unit, if you're using that ERU. So the charge there, if you had the hundred and three dollars per two thousand one hundred and sixteen square feet, the charge would be half of that, or fifty-one dollars and fifty cents. And if we did a individual calculation using a five hundred square foot model, that property has two uni, two billable units at a thousand square feet, so it would be charged fifty dollars. So you can see the comparison there, based on the different charges. Uh-huh.
Could you just clarify why?
In the lower grid, the scenario, one uniform charge is higher than the hundred and three that you cited before, because I thought you said everyone would pay the same amount?
Yeah, basically, if, with the uniform charge, you're charging all single-family properties the same, and then the variation in charge happens for the non-residential properties. So when you do that kind of calculation, it ends up, I guess, to meet that seven hundred thousand, increasing the amount that you would charge the uniform, s, single-family properties to a hundred and eight instead of a hundred and three. I don't quite remember the details for why, but it's basically, once you do a uniform charge, you lose something.
That's okay.
I think because there are properties greater than two thousand one hundred and sixteen square feet, and if you were to charge them individually using an ERU of two thousand one hundred and sixteen square feet, there will be some properties that'll be one and a half billing units, two billing units, so you're, you're catch, capturing some additional monies there. Whereas if you just charge all single-family unit the same, you're going to need to bump it up slightly in order to reach that, the amount you need. I think we have, yeah, we have a chart here that shows the impact for a institutional facility. And this one's, it's a little harder to read, because it isn't in the same format as the previous slide. But basically, in the first column, you'll see that currently, with a ninety-two dollar rate and an assumption of two hundred and eighteen ERUs, they paid twenty thousand, just a little over twenty thousand dollars annually for, in the stormwater fee. With the updated impervious area of a little more than three hundred and forty-one thousand square feet, the number of ERUs goes down to a hundred and sixty-one. If you charge that one oh eight forty-seven per ERU, their, their annual bill would be seventeen thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars. If you used a five hundred square foot billing unit, they'd have six hundred and eighty-three billing units. At twenty-five dollars per five hundred square feet, that would be seventeen thousand and eighty-four dollars. So fairly similar, depending on whether you use a five hundred square foot as a billing unit, or the ERU of a hundred and eight dollars and forty-seven cents. Basically, a slight reduction over what they're currently being charged, but in the same ballpark. So this leads us to the next question, which is a kind of a jump from where we were. But the other issue that we will need to look at, because of the change in impervious areas, currently, the code says, properties that have one-third of an ERU, or in the past, were just about four hundred square feet, were considered undeveloped and not charged. If we now used one-third of an ERU, and we now have an increased ERU to over twenty-one hundred square feet, so that would be a property of seven hundred square feet. And clearly, there are properties with houses on it that are seven hundred square feet, that would not be the intention for, to be considered undeveloped. So we would also need to go in and take a look at the definition of undeveloped land that we currently have, since we set it at one-third of an ERU. And we would need to adjust that to better, you know, accommodate and adjust to make sure that what we're considering undeveloped land is reasonably undeveloped land, and doesn't have a house or a garage on it, or something that's generating, potentially generating runoff.
Just wanted, just wanted.
On this, I wanted to note that I really appreciated that the consultants spent a lot of time, not only doing the kind of land analysis, but looking through our code as to everything that might be affected by these different approaches. So some of these slides have to, are like this, which are things that they saw in the code that, you know, we've had to do a cleanup, depending on which options we chose. As we go forward, well, going backwards, I guess, one slide where we talked about the hospital, it's interesting that even though their impervious surface amount increased, just the different kind of calculations meant that their actual payment would decrease. As we go through, you know, some of the various options just show, I think, a real opportunity to be much more accurate by parcel about kind of representing the impacts on the, on the whole stormwater system. So it's kind of, I actually feel real excited as we go forward, so.
Yeah. And Nima worked up a slide, do we have it on the same one, Jesse, or?
It's.
We, we now have the data layers that Black and Beach work with, so we have the LiDAR and the GIS layers and the property.
It's also in your packet that was passed out?
Yes.
Before you leave the undeveloped, it says, before you leave the undeveloped.
Yep, that's it. So this again is.
Can I? I think Cindy's trying to ask you a question.
Oh, sorry.
Very, just a factual question on undeveloped. It says, excuse me, twenty-eight more properties?
Uh-huh.
What qualifies undeveloped? About how many properties are undeveloped now? Ten, a hundred, three hundred?
I don't, I don't have the answer to that, yeah, I don't have the answer to that. I can find out and, and let you know. So this chart basically breaks the city up, and what we were trying to get at is, if we were to use, for instance, if we were to use the five hundred square feet as the basis for our equivalent residential unit, you know, as a replacement for our ERU.
Just use the five hundred square feet, twenty-five bucks per five hundred square feet of impervious surface.
So what we wanted to get at was, how many single-family property owners would pay less than they're paying now? So for instance, if you had between five hundred and, say, five hundred square foot of impervious area, you would be billed twenty-five dollars instead of the ninety-two. If you had five hundred square feet, I'm sorry, if you had a thousand square feet, you'd be billed fifty dollars instead of the ninety-two, and you'd kind of go up in five hundred square foot increments. So basically, once you get to two thousand square feet, you're, you'd be billed a hundred dollars, pretty equivalent to the ninety-two dollar charge now. So what this was an, an effort to do, was to say, how many properties in the city are two thousand square feet and more, and would be billed more than the current bill rate of ninety-two? And, and conversely, so those that are yellow on this chart are properties that are smaller than two thousand square feet, so would be billed at the existing rate or less, if we were to go to a five hundred square foot system. And the pink properties are those that are two thousand square feet and more, and would pay more than the current stormwater utility fee. Now, one of the deceptive things about this is, we did not just color single-family properties in here. So you have all the commercial properties, all the multifamily properties, all the institutional properties, so it's slightly, you know, better representation would be for us to take out, you know, give a different color to all the non-residential, so you can compare just the residential, and we can certainly work on that. But as a, as an effort to try to get a more visual sense of the impact of this, you can see on those small lots where the single-family properties are, as opposed to the multifamily or commercial. And so, interesting to note, you know, in Ward One, five hundred and fifty-two out of the nine hundred and fifteen parcels or properties are two thousand square feet and less. So about sixty percent, forty percent or less, sixty percent or more. Ward Two, four hundred and forty-seven out of the six hundred and, nine hundred and sixty-five. So in that, in Ward Two, less than fifty percent of the properties are greater than two thousand square feet. So more properties, the majority of properties are under two thousand square feet in Ward Two.
A lot of properties.
Yep, by, by lot.
By property, yeah.
By lot, including, if there were five multifamily buildings, that'd be five lots.
Mm-hmm, 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 yep. Ward Three.
I have a question. Sorry. Thank you. Are you counting in these numbers, do these include the, the larger, non-single-family?
Yeah, they include all the parcels within the ward.
Okay.
So I think one of the things that, that our gut feeling was on this, and we really will, can pull up more information as we go forward, but frequently, the smaller house lots are more modest income people, or more modest homes, have smaller actual impervious surface. So it may very well be that applying the five, the twenty-five dollars per five hundred square feet of impervious surface might be a, a pretty equitable way of approaching how to pay for the actual impact. And, you know, one of the things that we talked about, and we still have some discussions that we can have with the consultant, you know, there were all these questions about, can you do credits, can you do other kinds of things? Well, one of the things is, if you got a big patio, you could take out your patio. If you could get under that five hundred, you know, you get down to the next level down, you can make a fairly significant change ongoing in your, in your impervious surface for your property. And so, and there were some other things that were being talked about, but it was really, I don't know, somehow it was just really refreshing to have something that also is explainable to residents, about why they're billed, what they're getting. What, what does the stormwater fee do, and you can really tie it to how much impervious surface is on your property.
But under that, this approach, so if you had three thousand square feet, though, you'd be paying.
You'd pay more.
An, an extra two more shots of the five hundred square foot.
That's right. You might pay a hundred and fifty bucks.
Unit cost, yeah.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yep.
I'm not sure, maybe you've mentioned, but does, does this assessment take into consideration that someone may have, the patio is a pervious surface, and same for driveways?
No, not at, not at this level. We've got the LiDAR information, and we have the county information, so if someone were to have removed their driveway and put in pervious pavers, they would need to communicate with the city and, and basically show us that they're.
So that would be an exception basis?
Yeah, mm-hmm. Which is, we don't have that now for single-family, because everybody gets billed the same, so it doesn't matter what you do. There's no incentive, we certainly don't have a rebate or a rainscapes program, but there's no incentive to change your.
There's no monetary incentive, but there is a.
Right, no money, yep.
Well, there's certainly a moral incentive.
Moral incentive, and for some folks, just a livability incentive of trying to improve the way water works around their property, particularly if they.
So they had that big line, so I could speak to them?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, we, you know, one of the things that people need to be aware of, and unfortunately, we get calls all the time, of someone's solved their stormwater problems by pumping their some pump directly into the foundation area of their neighbor. Not a good solution, so.
But, but not illegal?
Right, right.
But it is if you do it onto the county's property?
If you cause a hazard to a roadway, which icing on a road certainly is, and if we have a point source where we can identify the source of the water, then we have to take action.
You certainly can cut, have a, have a civil action against the neighbor for having something deposited onto your property. I mean, there are, but that's, that doesn't have anything, we don't take a role in that.
But if it just rolls downhill off of your property onto the neighbors?
I know, it's really tough.
Right, right.
And the same would be true on the street, if it came down across your property, then you're not.
If it was a non-point source, yeah, just, you know, water washing, I mean, in, in some cases, there's certainly pervious area that's, that's a lead, we met with a couple of your constituents today on Elwin Court, you know, which has huge problems with water runoff, not from Ritchie Avenue, the street, but from the properties on Ritchie Avenue.
Sure.
Topography and gravity will always, will always win, and so, water rolls downhill.
So were you able to come up with any solutions?
No, it's a, you know, it's a private property matter, that will require significant investment on the part of those property owners to address ways to kind of shore up and create drainage channels around their property to keep their basements dry.
So one of the things, I think, I don't want to get into the discussion tonight about the impacts of climate change, and kind of just how to deal with community-wide rain issues. I think stormwater issues are, it's a big deal, it's, it requires state and federal funds, it requires a whole different approach. For tonight, we're, we're trying to focus on this, the results that we got about the impervious surface. The thing that's kind of nice is that there's some things that we can do on our own properties to, you know, this identifies the impervious surface, there's some options that we can work with, depending on how the council wishes to proceed, about how you show exceptions, how you, you know, if somebody gets in and say, you know, I've actually got this system, there may be a, a way to file that. What we don't want is something that's an onerous system, to have to keep checking. The, the consultants were, I thought, pretty good about saying, it makes sense to come up with a system where every five years, we get another one of these assessments, or that there's some other way that, you know, we kind of build in a regular assessment, so that as things change, it gets reflected here. There's maybe some ways that there are credits. I think, Darryl, you even talked about, as we get to the tree canopy information, that there may be ways that by planting trees, you end up getting some credit on stormwater. And so there, so there may be some interesting approaches, rather than kind of, the, the county's rainscape program and the DC programs are somewhat onerous to administer, and they're hard to, after the first year, or whatever, they're very hard to say they're still working, and you have to go on private property, and, you know, there's a variety of things about it that make them difficult. But maybe there's other ways that then allow people to pay less, or recognize their impact on the storm system, stormwater system, and, and we might have some very interesting credits that get us, advance other priorities that the city has at the same time. So I think there's some neat things about it, that we can look at as we go through the, the options for this.
I think one of the biggest take. I think one of the biggest takeaways for us was that we do need to update our calculations because we now have data that shows that. But we really need to marry that with our billing system. Otherwise, we're going to have a significant loss of revenue. So we, well, we need to do those things simultaneously at whatever point in time we choose to do them.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yeah, I just, the map is really interesting. How did you? It would be good if we could separate out the single-family parcels. But just looking, for example, on Elm Avenue, most of those are single-family. And a lot of the lots are the same size, and some of them are yellow and some of them are red. So how did you, was 2,000 square foot impervious area arbitrary? Or did you have a reason why you picked 2,000 instead of?
Well, we picked that because of the proximity to the current rate structure.
Because it's close, it's between the two.
Yeah, if we were to go to a 500 square foot system versus the ERU at 2,000 square feet, you would be billed $100, which is close to the $92 current fee.
You know, we have the actual information for every parcel now, so.
Yeah, we know the impervious area by parcel, citywide. And also too, with this chart, you know, 2,000 is sort of a, we have the most properties at 2,000 square feet. So it seems like one way or another, that's, you know, important.
Just as a footnote, I like the idea of doing some kind of credits or some way to get folks to think about permeable pavers and all of those kinds of things.
Well, one of the things that is really helpful from an administrative end on something like that is, because it's not a rebate program, but it is an incentive program. So it's a way for the city to, you know, basically ensure reduction in impervious area, which would then reduce runoff, but not necessarily have a payout in a rebate, but rather would be a reduction in the bill. So it's just an easier, you know, rather than cash out of hand at the city, it's just a reduction in the revenue coming in.
It also makes, I mean, and it's also cheaper because we're not having to do a certain kind of mechanism and pay and send out a check and do all of that. It's actually just a part of the bill.
Councilmember DeBala?
Thanks. I'm just curious on the hospital. Maybe it's unique because it's so large, but it just sort of seems off to me to have a situation where the area, the impervious area has increased substantially. It looks like maybe because they captured the roadways and opposed to just building. And to have them pay less. So, I mean, is there a way, would it make sense? Is there a way to decouple the calculation for the commercial properties from the, whatever we do for the residential? Or does it kind of have to be linked in that way? Is there another way to calculate that?
Well, I mean, we could certainly ask Black and Beach. Usually with these stormwater utility fees, you have a set rate that gets applied across the board. And typically, the residential properties are the one that are, you know, grouped in a big box. They all pay the same no matter what. And then the commercial, because they're larger, get individually calculated. I don't know that we want to have a different rate for commercial versus single-family.
That actually might trigger some legal issues too.
Well, I mean, to get a more accurate reflection of what exists on these properties, having just chunks of units that gradually increase probably does make more sense. I'm just curious, and you don't have to answer this now, but Councilmember DeBala mentioned, you know, the credits for certain things. So like if you have a sump pump or a rain garden, I mean, do those things, could they potentially mean that the effective amount of the impervious surface you have would actually be a little bit less? Because it's calc, you know.
Well, the way the system currently works is it's capturing impervious area. So if you had a rain garden in and of itself, you would still have the same amount of impervious area. The fact that you were treating on-site isn't, we don't have a way to capture.
Could we have a way, or you think that's too much, too much work?
Well, the difficulty in that is people need to apply. We have to go out and do a site visit. We have to verify that it was constructed within a certain amount of, you know, parameters. We have to then go out at least every three years to make sure it's maintained and functioning in the way it was intended. And that's by state law. If you're going to take credit for a treatment, you have to inspect every three years.
And that's where, that's where a number of jurisdictions have really fallen down, and there's been some lawsuits about.
Well, so the other question I had though, you mentioned terrain. So like in my house, you know, I mean, it's flat, but then there's a hill behind. So, I mean, things come, water comes pouring off of there. So, I mean, should I be paying more? Because my runoff, you know, just by the nature of the property is kind of worse and contributes more to untreated runoff?
Well, the assumption is the runoff from your property.
I'm not advocating that, but.
No, but the assumption is the runoff from your property is related to your impervious area. The water that's coming to your lot from uphill is related to their impervious area.
No, it's my hill, so.
It's your hill, but the water coming from there is coming from somewhere else. I mean, typically, grass and tree and wooded lots don't generate runoff like a house roof or a parking lot or a sidewalk. I mean, they have far higher rates of infiltration and, you know, the, there are analysis of what water on a grassy hill is versus water on a parking lot. So, I mean, the assumption is that when you have a wooded slope or a natural slope or a grass slope, the runoff from that is far less than it would be if it was impervious.
You know, obviously, if we had lots of time, we could come up with very sophisticated things by parcel. What I really like about the, looking at the 500 square foot unit, for example, is that it's a very straightforward way of getting information. It's easy to explain, it's relatively easy to administer. And so as we go through this, even with credits or other kind of processes, something that doesn't require us to increase our fee to pay for staff to run the system is also a, is also a saving. So, you know, I appreciated hearing the consultant's suggestions about ways to limit the administrative burdens of the different options. And, you know, so it makes sense to start thinking about this. We were presenting it to you tonight because it's really interesting information on a parcel basis. We'll be getting more information out to you. We wanted you to start thinking about it as we get into budget season. We're not only going to have this, but we have, you know, other information by parcels that will be coming to you. And it starts to put together a picture, I think, about, you know, how we all are together and the impacts that, areas where we can help each other and what those impacts are, and how we handle equity. And on this one, I think there's some race equity issues that I think have some real advanced, you know, advantageous approaches if indeed there's a relationship between having smaller properties and some, and a race breakdown. And I think that's something we don't know completely. But, you know, there may be some real things to think about. By keeping the ERU approach, may not be the best approach from a race equity perspective. And so, we don't know enough information yet. That's one of those things to consider. But it gives us some, it gives us some real opportunities, I think, to make a change that might make some advances for us.
Can I just?
You're in line?
Oh, okay.
You can go ahead of me if you want to.
I'll pick DeBala and then you.
I just had a couple of questions. This is really interesting, and I think it's great that we're looking at this. I don't know that you have this information, but was there any sense through this of what sort of impervious surfaces are the most common? Because I feel like something like a patio might be something that could potentially be changed. But a house footprint or a driveway, maybe, maybe not, depending upon what kind of surface there is. And that might be interesting to look at in terms of ways to incentivize people to change and remove some of that impervious surface, if we have an idea about what it most typically is.
Yeah, I can ask, I don't know if there are layer distinguishes between house, driveway, lead walk. I assumed it was all on the same layer, but I'll confirm. They may have a building footprint separate from the rest of the impervious area. So we may be able to tease out what the building footprint is versus the additional added impervious.
To that point, I do want to acknowledge that a downside of ADUs, expanding impervious surface on people's property, may have that additional cost, both to our system, but to them in stormwater fees. So that's something to consider also as we go through those processes.
Councilmember DeBala?
I have one more quick question. Sorry. My other question is, in terms of the 700, the 700,000 goal, it seems like we're increasingly finding a need to address stormwater issues. And we heard tonight from Marizna who has issues. And we were at a meeting just the other night with Poplar Avenue residents who have a lot of issues with stormwater. So is that a number that you see as fairly consistent? Or if we're looking at doing new projects, would that need to be increased? How feasible for a model is this moving forward?
Well, when we recommended that rate and that revenue stream, it was in fiscal year, it was looking at fiscal year 18 to 22 or 23, whatever the five years is. So we had a list of projects that we have identified and intended to move forward on over that time. And they are specifically related to system maintenance and as well as mandated requirements of water quality testing and treatment of the 20, you know, getting to the treatment of the 20% goal. So that is what that program is geared towards. We do not have a program at this point to assist residents with private property stormwater issues. If we were to try to get our hands around that, that would be a system in and of itself, probably at, if not as much cost, certainly within the ballpark of that. Further complicated by the fact that you're on private property, we don't have a right, for lack of a better word, to be there. We would have to get easement agreements, negotiate arrangements with multiple property owners, some of which may or may not be either interested or willing to participate or cooperate. So it opens up an entirely different area, whereas now our stormwater programs are on right-of-way properties. Or if there's an event where stormwater from a right-of-way is affecting private property, we have to address it within the public right-of-way. And so that's where our programs lie now, all within the public right-of-way. So we don't have programs on private property. The, you know, one, historically, the city explored a stormwater project on private property on West Moreland Avenue. And in that case, I believe the city paid for the design, but the property owners were assessed the cost of the project construction and had a 20-year loan from the city at zero interest rates.
That's the pipe in the backyard, yeah, okay.
So that's the only time I know of in a, you know, kind of an organized fashion that work was done on private property. But it was done through an engineering firm, and it was a multi-year project. And in that case, all the property owners were in agreement and participated in the system, you know, which would also be a requirement for that. But anyway, I don't know if I answered your question other than that was kind of a five-year, a vision of a five-year program with the assumption that we have this deadline of 2025, that we've already seen that we're slipping in terms of being able to reach for the treatment requirements. So the assumption is that the rates will, you know, the costs will continue to go up. But we were hoping to keep five years at that rate.
Okay.
Councilmember DeBala?
So along those lines, so that's also based on the goal from the current permit, stormwater permit?
Our NPDES permit.
And there's a, I know you explained this to me, but I'm forgetting. There's either about to be, or there just has been a new permit. And is, do you see?
October of last year.
Do you see that changing the volume and the costs of what the city needs to do under the stormwater permit by a significant amount?
Well, no, the requirements remain pretty much, I mean, even, we have a new permit as of October, as do all Maryland smaller municipalities. The counties had theirs a year or so earlier. Prior to that, our permit was from 2003 and it expired, but we were all operating under the assumption that the conditions and the requirements would continue. And we knew that the 20% treatment requirement was going to be part of that new permit. So we've been working towards that goal since 2006.
Not a great change.
Yep. No change in what we need to do, though. What the state is getting clearer about is record-keeping, database, maintenance. There's much more strenuous requirements for producing spreadsheets with permit numbers, inspection dates, you know, treatment capacity. So we are now having to produce a lot of the information in formats that are compatible with the state requirements. So they're very much fine-tuning their requirements in terms of our reporting, our annual reporting.
And just to repeat, so if rain patterns are changing and there's more water, that's not part of this. This is about the impervious surface. And there may be more runoff everywhere, but it, yeah, that's not what we're looking at here. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for doing this. We've talked about this for a while. My question has to do with Washington Ventus University. I saw that things changed with the hospital, but I haven't seen anything different with the university. Is there any information that you just haven't shared with us?
Oh, yeah, we, I mean, we have, as Susie mentioned, we have all the impervious area per lot for every parcel in the city. So we have that information.
So is there a larger amount of impervious surface that you saw with the university?
Yeah, I think in almost, I think in almost every case, the amount of impervious area per parcel increased. And sometimes not because it increased, just because the data gathering was better than it was in the late 80s. And in cases like the hospital and the university, they've added facilities since then. So that, they'll definitely have a larger footprint.
Okay, thank you.
Steps, what do you need from us?
Don't know.
I just want you to ruminate on this, and if you have some sense of, absolutely not, we want to stay with the ERU, or no, we're really interested in a more, you know, kind of flat number, 100, 500 square foot kind of thing. If there was a, you know, to get a sense of that, so we could develop.
So the first, the first thing is that we are not likely to be able to have this in place for the FY '20 budget and for the stormwater billing for FY '20. We very well could have it for the FY '21. Nevertheless, I think this is such a different approach, or there's some different options here, that it's, I wanted to have it as part of your thinking. I wanted to have it as part of your thinking going into the priority setting and how it cuts across some of these other topics. If there's some, I mean, we'll do another map that just shows the single-family parcels and get that out. But if there's some other kind of information that you want from us, send a message to Daryl and me. We have some, I think we have some more capacity to be working with the consultants a little bit more on some options. They certainly work with credit programs in other communities and other kinds of things. So there may be some things that we could ask them to do. But I would like you to think about this. You may have some discussions with your constituents that then bring up a different idea. But I would very much, I think just right now, I just wanted you to think about it. And like I said, we'll get out a different map for you to review.
Great, terrific, all right. Well, thank you very much. As Councilmember Smith said, we've been waiting for this for a long time, and we're glad to kick off the new year with it. So thank you for the work on this.
Sure.
All right, we are adjourned. See everyone Monday.